Good morning. I like to call Adams County Board too, but I need two more. Mr. Bradford, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, I would. Everybody say it. Our God is, "Daddy and Father, we thank you this morning, oh God, for allowing us to see another day. And Father, we just thank you for being our right now. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you look over our life to the fishes continue to keep them safe from any hurt, harm, or danger, protect their families. And Father, we ask that you continue to give them the wisdom, oh God, to lead your people, oh God, and to make crucial decisions. And Father, we just want to pause and ask, oh God, that keep the, our Florida family in prayer, that suffered through the hurricane. We ask, oh God, that you continue to make provision, make ways for them. And the ones that may have lost their lives, we ask that you comfort their families, oh God. And Father, we just want to pray for our school systems in this county this morning, our teachers, our students, allow them to be safe. We pray for our first responders, oh God, Father, continue to protect them. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to let peace abide in this county, in this city, in this state, and in this world, oh God. And Father, we just ask, oh, and pray, Son Jesus name, amen.
Amen.
No, please, I say so loud. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we're gonna have an open call. Supervisor Gray here, Supervisor Hudson.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Supervisor Gaines.
Here.
Deputy Clerk, page 18.
Present.
Chancery Clerk, Randy Lewis.
Present.
More Attorney, Scott Slover. County Executive, Senator Angie King.
I am here as well.
First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes for September. Can I get a motion?
Oh.
Motion by Supervisor Gaines. Second by Supervisor Wilson. What else? Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Thinking of the September the sixth minutes, an hour, top page, you know, necessary for rest.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, aye.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the dockets. Does everyone read through the dockets? Can I get a motion? Motion by Supervisor Hudson.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, aye.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the monthly financial reports for Adams County Sheriff's Office. Can I get a motion?
So do.
Motion by Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah.
Second by Supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye, aye. Next, we need to approve the monthly financial reports for the Chancery Clerk's Office. Can I get a motion?
So do.
Motion by Supervisor Gaines. Can I get second? Second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, aye. At this time, I'm gonna ask for Mr. Gray West to begin his presentation. Testing.
I'm ready.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here, I'm back here to hopefully finish out phase one of an idea that I brought to you, representing the committee on February 2021. You should have a sample of the minutes, of what I did, of what y'all agreed to do, concerning the Natchez-Adams County High School team's state championship role idea. After your agreement, per minutes, I went to the city and told them, what y'all agreed to do if we would raise some money to purchase the signs. So they internally agreed to pay for thirty signs at about fifteen hundred dollars. And when I left them, I went to the school board and told them what y'all agreed to do and what the city agreed to do. And so they agreed to purchase thirty more signs for fifteen hundred dollars. And then I came back to you after we received the signs and the fence where the signs are supposed to go was out of shape. So we had to check into see who might repair the fence. And we had to find out who actually owned the fence to see if they will repair it. Well, we found out that the school district actually owns the property, but it's on a long-term lease with you, the county, when they built the safe room. So the school district actually owned the fence. So we went to them about repairing the fence and they agreed. We met with Mr. Ford and our contractor and he's going to let me know, but he, they did commit to fixing the fence. So now I'm back with you, back before you, because we came up with another idea. Instead of putting the signs on poles, the fence was right there, so we just put them on the fence. So you have a quote from Southern Signs, how much they were charged. It's too cheap to put the sixty signs that we already have on the fence. So I'm here to see if you want to go with your original commitment of putting them on the poles. And just keep in mind, there are at least twenty more signs that we know of that haven't been purchased yet. We're just trying to don't get these sixty of them. Or if you want to go with the quote from Southern Signs to put them on a fence, which is, so that you see the prices on both. The first, for the pole, I think you said fourteen hundred something on the main sheet and then a second sheet, and then you would have to install the pole.
I would imagine that price has gone way up since you got that quote.
No, y'all gave, y'all gave me that. Well, it probably right.
Yeah, it's on the same price as pole price.
And now the quote from Southern Signs I got last week.
Tell me which fence this is going on?
The parking lot, where the fence is between Liberty Park and the parking lot, but on the, on the safe room side.
From the baseball field and the safe room?
Yeah, baseball field, that road that goes between the baseball field.
It's across.
Okay.
Not on the baseball side, everything will be on the safe room side, correct?
Yes, and what, well, we're gonna ask y'all to have final approval of that, but that's the proposal. We're gonna, because we're just volunteers, blah, blah, you know, so we're gonna need, because we admit, I mean, the way I worded the question was, would y'all take ownership of the signs? Because after we put the first ones up, other school reps are gonna come back with other proposals, so.
Supervisor Gray, go ahead.
I thought you said earlier that the school owned the fence?
Yeah, they own the property.
So don't you think you need to get permission from the school to put? And we, we don't mind about putting the signs on the fence, but if it's their fence, do the permission need to come from them? Since they, is their fence?
Uh, what? No, this is a good idea. This is what we're looking at. We're dealing with all the past and present high schools, public and private. The best organization to be in charter that is accounting since you got public and private school and all the schools were in the county. You know, if you, the city could do it, and then y'all, y'all leasing the property right there. If, if.
It's not the case. We were given the property for the safe room and given the property along with the city for the pool. So we don't lease anything.
I went to the courthouse to find out and actually got a copper, I didn't bring any copper with me, but I had to get with y'all on that. But it's, it's a long-term lease.
My question is, since the school owned the fence, do you need to get permission from them for us to put the signs on there, maintain them? I don't think they have a problem with putting the signs on, but since they own the fence, do the permission need to come from them?
It might. I'm, I'm not asking for permission to put them on. I mean, I am, but I'm asking.
Is, the county would be willing to place the signs on the fence, but we do not own the fence. So we need permission from the school to place the signs on the fence. That's all we need. He's asking if we can buy it, if we'll buy the signs. Is that right? Pay the installation?
No, just installation.
Just pay the installation of Southern Signs.
No, no, it's only eight dollars. We've already approved fourteen seventy-seven.
And we're gonna need, Mr. Gray was asking about, well, after the signs are put on the fence, we need one of the entities to actually own the sign. And since y'all already were on the property, or leased the property, y'all over there, so when future reps from schools come, they can come to you guys. I, I don't think the city, I mean, the public or private schools would have a problem coming to you guys.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So what you saying, when AC or Natchez High or Cathedral win another championship, they just come to us and be?
Yeah, we need them to go, come to one of, one, one.
I don't have a problem with that.
At this time, I'm gonna ask you to amend your motion that you made to, to, to change it to, labor and mounting hardware to install sixty signs on the fence pending a frugal budget. If you're okay.
Yes, I am, yes, yes, I'm a pretty, I will, I will, yeah, see, I will amend my motion.
And I seconded the original, so I will second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, aye.
Can I need clarification? Once those sixty are out there, are y'all automatically the owners or, because we need, y'all are confident to own them, so if somebody else come back? Those originals, the first sixty, once we put them up there, do y'all own them, or can we get y'all to own them?
President, you have a question? Okay. We, did we, we purchased all the signs, or it was?
No, we got them.
Y'all purchased the same?
With the city, about thirty, and the county, I mean.
In the school?
In the school, about thirty.
Right. So you asked us to be the owners. Have you asked the city or the school? See, we don't want to have a conflict when everybody purchased the signs. So you probably need to ask the school, is it okay, or the, the city is okay, that the county be over the signs and stuff like that.
I can do it.
We don't just want to say we are the owners when they have, and call it in a purchase.
I take care of it.
Does that, does that answer everything?
Yes.
You wouldn't get us an answer on that, we'll move forward.
I'd like to see the leases side.
You need a answer.
For permission to place the signs on the fence.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Miss Stacy Conde.
I'm waiting for it to pop up. There you go. Alright, well, I want to start off by thanking you for letting me come and speak before you. Last year, we did the first annual iteration of Alumair Natchez. We did it over at Dunleavy, and what Alumair Natchez is, is a light-based art exhibition and festival, okay? So it's STEAM-heavy, so you know STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. This adds art to that mix. It's free and open to the public. So we rely on sponsorships, grants, donations from individuals, fundraisers that I'm constantly doing, to raise money so we can keep it free and open to the public, right? People come with their entire families, and we want people to be able to continue to come regardless of socioeconomic situation, alright? This exposes a lot of people in our city and our county to different projects, different kinds of art that they may have never seen. Well, I guess we're not gonna be able to move it from, let's see. How can I move it up and down here? Thank you. Just up and down right here? Can you fix that? Anyway, I'll keep talking while we're working on our technical difficulties. But last year, we got about five thousand people over the course of three evenings, okay? Seventy percent of them, seventy percent of them came from within sort of the Natchez-Adams County area, and thirty percent of them traveled to come and spend the night here. People, rather tourists, arts tourists, spend more money and more time in a place that they travel to, to see this kind of an installation, this kind of a project. And I keep talking about this light-based art project. Basically, if you've never seen it before, have you ever seen like projections on the side of the building, where it looks like the building is moving and falling down, and it catches on fire and goes out and all that? That's what I'm talking about. Lunafed in New Orleans has this. They get a hundred thousand people in four days into the city of New Orleans. There is no reason why we cannot continue to grow this festival year on year with your help and attract more and more people to our area. So right here, what you're looking at, Arts Danu is a nonprofit organization recently formed here in Natchez. It's an arts 501(c)(3), and so this project, Alumair Natchez, has moved out from under Conde Contemporary, my business, and over to the 501(c)(3). So Arts Danu will put on this festival every year and also create a teaching artist residency program, where we'll be bringing artists from all over the world to come and live and work in Natchez for, you know, let's say, two to six weeks, and then they will give back by teaching in the community for free. So everyone gets the opportunity to have a world-class arts education right here in Natchez, again, crossing socioeconomic boundaries. Alright. This is a, this is an object that I can reference, honestly. Did it work? There you go. Anyway, real quick insights. We wrapped up our first year, again, seventy percent from out of town, thirty percent, or rather, in town, thirty percent from out of town. These are some of the installations. I don't know if you can see them. So they're taking place all around Dunleavy. Last year, we had seven. This year, we're gonna have between nine and ten. And by the way, I think it's really important to know that the end goal is not to have this at Dunleavy. My idea is not to just light up Dunleavy. It's just that I can get my arms around it there, and it's less expensive to do it on this property. Next year will be our third year, so we'll have two years in the bag, and I can start to apply for a national endowment for the arts grant, a major NEA funding. Then we can move it all over the place. We can bring it downtown in all sort of different locations in different parts of the community and light up everywhere. I mean, this is a huge boon for business and economic development. Alright, so I'm just gonna flip through real quick some of the projects. Here, we worked with Mississippi School Folk Arts. This was the VIP, so again, it's free and open to the public. You can come with your whole family. You don't have to pay anything to come in. We do have a VIP section, because again, I'm endlessly trying to raise money for this project so we can keep it free. Here we go. Google campaign results. We reached three hundred and forty-seven thousand people, alright? The top cities, New Orleans, Austin, Jackson, Baton Rouge, Mobile, Pensacola, Covington, Ruston, Hattiesburg, Vicksburg, and Biloxi. And then you get the breakdown. Top audience cities on social platforms. We reached fifty-five thousand people via social media campaigns, okay? And again, you're getting the breakdown there. This is a stat that I thought was pretty interesting, so we advertised pretty heavy through Listen Up Y'all, and they also kind of granted us back what we spent. So on their website, we got nine thousand nine hundred clicks, and the best part was that eight thousand six hundred of those clicks were from new users. That's a big deal. That means people are looking at our community that didn't actually ever even try to get to that website before and find information about anything. So it's, it's a big deal. Media coverage, we had a great cover article, rather, cover story and an interview in Country Roads Magazine, and then, you know, I'm not gonna, they're there, you can see them. Marketing opportunities. Home Bank was a huge sponsor. Worked with our artists. Our artists did this, again, this beautiful thing where the, the building moves all around and then bam, comes Home Bank, you know? I mean, that could be any, any sponsor. And now this is just my pitch, really more for corporate, trying to get funding. And that's, and that's it. The last thing that I want to mention, and, because I think it's a really important stat, and people tend to play down what the arts bring to the table in terms of money into a community. And look, arts and cultural economic activity accounted for four point three percent, or nine hundred and nineteen point seven billion, with a B, of current dollar gross domestic product in 2019. Now, obviously, we're looking at 2019, because, you know, 2020, we all know what happened to 2020. But, um, there you go. I'm, I'm really looking for support from Adams, from Adams County. You know, the city is sponsoring us. They sponsored us last year. They're upping the amount that they're giving us this year. And we need all the help we can get. There you go. That's my story.
Uh, Mr. President, I, I, I think it's something good for the community, and I think we need to get on board. My only problem is, uh, we, there's a process that we have in place when it comes to donate money. And unless you're looking for next year, we already committed to that process this year. So I think you need to submit it out to the county administrator for beyond, for see if you can get an appropriation, a donation for next year, and run by a attorney to see if it'd be even legal for us to do it.
I would have to look at that, to research it. That'd be my concern. It might fall under that appropriation statute, but it may not.
Saying it's not, it's gonna be a nonprofit next year?
No, it's not a nonprofit.
Nonprofit status has no bearing whatsoever whether we can or can't donate something. There's plenty of things that we can donate to that are not nonprofits. And having nonprofit status, you know, like if tomorrow, open up a nonprofit, whatever I want in this facility, give it. We can only donate to those that have specific legislative authority to do it. And you're just limited in what you could give. If you don't do that, it violates the Constitution, so it just depends.
I don't know if you guys want to dig that.
No, it's not particularly me, because then I'll have a fine, so it's important.
Well, I know a lot of city and county governments are absolutely sponsoring these kinds of things in their community and investing back into the arts for the community.
I'll reach out to the city and see what authority they did, they used to do it. Cities have different authorities, and counties are under two different statutory schemes as well. Sometimes they share some things. Sometimes they do things without any authority. Sometimes they don't get caught, so.
Well, Mr. President, you, you gotta look at the fact that the city do have community development money that they get from places that we don't get money from, where they can utilize their money in a county where they want to. We, we don't have the fund where we can just.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What was the name of that money that came down through the federal government, both through the county?
They got a P fund?
Did.
The office.
Office fund?
Yes.
Michael Pace is a good, his, his organization's a good example. One thing's, the city can do, the Downtown Alliance, the city can give to that, the county can't. The city has specific legislative authority to do that, and the county doesn't have any of that. There's ways that we, some of their goals are achieving actual public improvement, so. There's ways that you can do some of those things, but we couldn't just outright give them money, so.
These were.
I'm saying you can't do it. I'm just saying.
Okay, right, right, I'm just, it's just that.
You didn't come to me and ask me on the front end, you came to me, and he's asking me whether to sleep or not. So I'm saying I just don't know. I have to look to see.
Sure. Alright.
And just because other people do it, doesn't mean, because I have to tell my eleven-year-old all the time, just because the rest of y'all, you send me and what else do you have?
Okay. Well, anyway, thanks again. I really appreciate your time. And please, if someone could let me know what my next steps are in terms of moving this forward.
Thank you for your presentation. I feel quite confident this board would want to support you and your efforts. And what we'll do is take this under advisement at this time until our turn.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And I hope you got, with this lady here with the paper, and she can put it in the paper, you know, where donations could be sent.
Yeah, we can definitely work on that. They, they've been very supportive of us last year and again this year. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next on the agenda, Ms. Barbara Winston.
Pardon me, I lost the word that I was on the agenda.
You're on here.
How did I get off? But it doesn't matter. Well, that is really amazing. I am on the agenda for what?
R E P M District Six invite.
Oh, yes. But I didn't know it was gonna come to this. I did send the lady over here an invitation.
Yes, ma'am.
I am vice president from the state of Mississippi for the retired education personnel of Mississippi. And I'm also serving as district director. I have about eleven or twelve counties that are retired teachers that I work with. Well, the state of Mississippi is divided into six districts. I, and each district has a district director. I am the district director for a lot of counties. Every year, each district, every other year, rather, each district gives a district meeting, and it's really a training session to teach what we are all about. And all of my districts will come together on the seventeenth of this month at Colleen, here in Natchez. I have been district director since 2014. When I came aboard, we were having our district meetings at Southwest Community College up in Summit. Well, I didn't try to change it. I went with the flow. And I have tried repeatedly to work with the people in Pike County as far as getting a unit established. They have life members, but they don't have an established unit. Well, I had no success. So I stopped fighting, trying to do different things, because I'm too old to deal with it. I decided I was just gonna bring the district meeting here to Natchez. And this is the first time that it has ever been to Natchez. And when I went to the executive session with the executive board, every district director was there and they had to say where the district meeting was gonna be. So when I said, "District Six will meet at Kapai Lincoln Community College in Natchez", it was a lot of o's and r's. Most people say, "Well, I've never been to Natchez", but then there were some who said, "I've been, and it is exactly, it's exciting, it's wonderful, and we are glad that you'll bring it." So Natchez will be the site, and District Six president will be hosting. And I am just excited about it. And I did send you all an invitation, so that you would see a representative, send a representative out to see what we are all about. And we give scholarships every year to students going into education. We give teacher grants so that our classroom teachers will not have to come out of their pocket to provide supplies for their students. And believe it or not, and I do talk a lot now and even on the agenda, but let me tell you. Throughout the entire state of Mississippi, we received one application for a scholarship, one throughout the whole state. And that was from District Six, my district. So of course, the young lady got it, because she had everything in order. And I was glad to give it to her, because she's thirty-seven-year-old single mother going to. going to Colleen and she's gonna make it. She is an A student, I'm gonna see that she makes it. Because what I do is a follow-up process. If you receive the teacher, I mean, the scholarship and ever since two thousand and fourteen when I did it, that we've always been aware. I follow up with you when you go to work. I make sure you fill out the paperwork to get the teacher grant. And it's a continuing process and two thousand dollars might not be a lot of money to some people. But for a struggling student, it can really help them. Well, anyway, that's enough of that. But I did send the board an invitation to send a representative to Colleen on the seventeenth at eleven o'clock to see what the retired education personnel of Mississippi is all about. And if I had known I was on there, I would've been more prepared.
Ms. Winston?
Yeah.
Did you say the seventeenth?
The seventeenth, that's on a Monday.
That's, that's our board meeting day. Is it gonna be at night or the morning?
Oh, we don't do anything at night, we're old, can't see how to drive. The registration will be at nine thirty. The meeting starts exactly ten o'clock. And we have rented the Walton Nelson multi-purpose room uh, until twelve thirty, so we'll be there until twelve thirty.
Well, I just looked in my uh, calendar, seventeen is on the third Monday and that's a meeting Monday for us, so.
Well, I understand that. I can understand that.
Since y'all feeding, I, I might be getting out of here.
Get out of here, say that. But yes, I have employed a caterer to cater a meal and it's going to be absolutely delicious. And not only are we doing a meal after the meeting, uh, during the registration, we're gonna serve our donuts and our coffee and our ice cream. So we are expecting big things. Our district meetings always go over so well because we have representatives to come from all of the counties that I see after. And we have uh, the PERS Director, Ray Higgins. Uh, you all know Mr. Ray Higgins, cause you're all in PERS retirement. So he is coming down. So is, uh, Dr. Phil Sunkin, he's dealing with the legislature. Uh, our, our State President will be there, our State Treasurer. It's a big deal. And this happens in each of the six districts. But we're not worrying about District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. We're worrying about what? District Six.
Thank you, ma'am.
And anytime you wanna know what's, what's going on with us, our website is R E P M dot U S. R E P M dot U S. When you get to that website, you can read about it. You can click on the three horizontal bars that you will see at the top right. Click on those bars and you'll see Ms. Barbara Winston.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. Next on the agenda, Ms. Marilyn Alexander.
I think my voice will be loud enough without the microphone, but that would be dope if you heard my voice, okay? My topic today is Morgantown Road and I know everybody is probably tired of hearing about Morgantown Road. So good morning to each of you and this morning I asked each of you to let me speak without being interrupted. No questions asked during the time you have allowed of me. It saves time and you don't sit in here three and a half hours waiting for a meeting. God gave us two years to listen and he gave us one mouth to speak. And I feel like it's time for me to speak up in regards to Morgantown Road. Time is of essence, we all have jobs to do and meetings do not need to become a battle between each of us trying to prove or blame the other. Your logo is, we're all one. Let's all get on the same wagon together. Can we all agree to this? The subject I would like to talk about today is Morgantown Road. Before I begin, I have a few pictures I would like to share with everyone in this building if they'd like to see them or whatever. And some of you are coming in on this last election, need to be informed on special things that will help each of you and let the public know the truth to have the things in place for us to move forward. To repair Morgantown Road legally and get them moving on the project that was started in two thousand and one, that's a long time ago, that was twenty years. Right now, I want to give y'all this to look at and I'll keep on doing it so we can get on that. This property belongs to my sister Carolyn and Timothy Johnson at fifty-seven Morgantown Road. Excuse me. My name is Marilyn Alexander and I live on Morgantown Road. I own five properties that join the road, so believe me, after living on this road for forty, over forty years, I know and I see the conditions and I know each of you that drive this road knows what I'm saying. Over five thousand cars a day pass on Morgantown Road and I was a traffic guard at Morgantown Road and I know with the schools and all out there, it is a lot of traffic. Every day, this traffic is going to Broadmoor, it's going to Washington, it's going all over. The road measures approximately ten feet on both sides of the center line in Morgantown Road. That's narrow. Danger, dangerous and especially when anyone meeting cars, you have nowhere to leave the road. If you do, then, if you're lucky, you didn't man you around, do bodywork, alignment, and the worst of all, losing a life that could have possibly been avoided. This road has became one of the worst each day. I was grateful for the white and the yellow lines that were temporarily put with the flooding, has removed them and the roads have terrible drop-offs on each side, some of them over eight inches in depth when you go over. You lose control. Your life could be taken, not only yours, but one of your grandkids or your husband, wives, friends or whatever. Trees over the road. Banks washing, dropping big trees off over that road is a big danger within itself. I could keep on going, but we all see, if we pay attention to what's above us is what is below, that danger can happen at any time to any of us or any of our families. If the county has some money, which supposedly it did at one time and was used elsewhere because right-ofways of people that live on Morgantown Road felt like eminent domain played no part to take properties from the right-ofway. Instead, quick takes was taken and it took control to bring my family, which is my sister, that has, she's very sick and it's been a lot, so I'm not going there and I'm not going to get emotional. But I have dealt with this for three or four years, staying up till three or four o'clock in the morning, trying to figure out how I can help my sister out without her having to move. And we asked the county, can you move over and go to the gully? That's all we asked. We never wanted to be took to court. We never wanted to put money out, it should've never been wasted, none of that should've ever happened. Uh, when, as you see these pictures, my family asked them to move over to the other side. At that time, they were aired on TV to be the whole, uh, revealing their names. Carolyn and Timothy Johnson. Fifty-seven Morgantown Road was aired on Bruce and I watched every video that y'all put out and it really hurt when I seen this. We're told over on the video that we should go harass these people and they're the ones that are holding up Morgantown Road. Well, I'm telling you something. My sister was scared to even come out of the house at that time, thinking somebody was gonna go by and shoot her because her and C D S was the ones that was holding up Morgantown Road, okay? Your stepping over into the woods can get you in deep trouble sometimes. A lot of times, things can happen and people can quit going to court and doing civil suits and all of this stuff when we can sit down, it's all in one and be able to speak what we feel and all get along. Uh, this costs all of us money in the long run. Believe me, I know. I stood up for what I felt was right and I saw this firsthand trying to help keep Morgantown Road out of my sister's living room. Three foot from her living room. All of us never want to leave our homes. I ask you, can this be looked at to move across from them to the other side? That is the only place drainage water can flow. It can't go up here. It can't go behind C D S. Water cannot flow uphill. And if it can, I would like for it to be shown to me that it can. You know, flow it, uh, Morgantown Road measures one point five miles. Recently, they did some work out there, they cut the road all the way across in front of the glass company. On the sign, it was a detour. One point five miles all the way down to the glass company. So what we're doing is actually not even a mile if we go to Red Loop only. Four miles is what it takes to do Morgantown Road. Morgantown Road is terrible all the way down. It's four miles. And actually, the city limits goes up right past those apartments. The apartments are owned county. City stops, follows Oakland and from this side of the thing, that's city, which is probably one tenth of a mile and down to Red Loop is probably eight tenths of a mile. So we're looking at one mile to do right now on Morgantown Road. Let's do it all. Go out there and cut them trees now. Don't let somebody's young'un get killed with a tree. And I'm talking about big trees. It happened the other day in front of the glass place, okay? So, when they patch the place first, I know it has to settle when they put coves in. The other day, we did get some rubber rock put on and thank you for that, that that was done. And I would like to see it go back and be blacktop. And I also have another problem. Whenever they came out and they redone all the roads out here, you know, I'm glad that some of you got blacktopped. I wish Parsons could get blacktopped too. You know, I wish Morgantown could turn around and look good. I've lived out there for forty years and I love Morgantown. I could chose to move anywhere else, but I haven't. Okay, we do not need to stop at Red Loop, we do not need to do all of the four mi- we do need to do all the four miles. I would say all people involved needs to see, Walt, the engineers, Robbie Dollar, supervisors, please, if you're knowledgeable and you can go out there and see what's around, above and around, go out there and look at it. Look at these pictures, pass these pictures. I ain't one that I wanna go I don't, never wanted to go to court, I don't wanna be in jail, I don't wanna do any of that. I wanna be able to sit down as one and we talk about it and we able to come up with a solution. Okay, now, this is something I want to ask about. And I won't ask for no answers right now and just go over it and y'all weigh it out or whatever. Right-ofways. Right-ofways need to be obtained or either inform myself and my family that you will move over to the other side. You already own the gully. Ribbons show more than taking, that's why I thought the pictures. So if the ribbons are placed, maybe we will all see what's really being taken away from us. I notice when it comes to right-ofways, everyone looks over at Mr. Scott Slower. Do we have all the right-ofways? His answer is, is always, either we're working on them or either we have obtained all right-ofways. I know this needs to be made sure of. You can ask God whenever or whatever, but that needs to really be made sure of, cause I don't know about it myself. Don't expect someone else to do this work. Find out yourself, because we all want to say, this is our homes. And if that can be done, let's get the ball rolling. I love Morgantown and I could've chosen, like anyone else, to move out of Natchez, but I chose to stay and be part of. And some of you here could own Natchez, but you're sitting on this board to make a difference and I appreciate it. And I appreciate every one of y'all on this board. Because I don't want any of y'all's jobs. I have a hard enough job just, you know, trying to get out of Morgantown Road sometimes. But no, you're in other words, some of you could, you know, you don't have to do what you do, but it is good that you do what you do. We have a great town to be proud of. Let's stop keeping going forward. And when you go out of town, be proud to say, we are, in our town, we have good people. In our town, we try to work together. We, our logo is, we're all one. So let's start being all one. We work together for the well-being for all people. A couple of quotes to think about. In life, it's not about how much money you have, who you are, who you know, not about politics. I see it's about being honest, fair, treating others the way you would want them to be treated to you, standing up and doing the right things. Actions speak louder than words. Your elected officials put in office by the people in Natchez and in Adams County, not to show your authority of your positions, but to be the woman and the man to do the best job you can. In life, anything you do always do the job as if no one was watching you. To know, but knowing you did the right thing on your own. People say this road will never be done. I say, put all our differences to the side. All of us pray this road can go forward. And I feel grateful, I am able to know, I really believe this whole road will be accomplished. And we recently went on vacation and we went to Dodge City. And I bought a cup that says, get the hell out of Dodge City. I hear people say, I'm getting the hell out of Natchez, Mississippi. I don't wanna leave Natchez. I chose to stay here and I think everybody in here loves Natchez. And I can tell you, you go to Dodge City, you really do that. But, and even the lady on the line, I sit there and listen to her. When you have a town and they're willing to move forward and they, they're willing to start doing things, Natchez is beautiful. Natchez has lots to offer. And there's money out there waiting to come to Natchez. We just all gotta get along, get some of these roads fixed so they can travel when they go out to Jefferson College and all. So I'm gonna, I get excited and I know I'm loud. And it might be good that that wasn't fixed on me, but I appreciate every one of y'all giving me time to think. And, you know, I think we gonna get more than our road do. Wow, and he said we got some more over here too. Anybody else wanna say anything?
Alright. Next on the agenda, city government business? If any. Alright, that time we'll get our departmental reports. Uh, this is. Mr. James Lee, you are first on there if you wanna go.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here very shortly for this very short time just to uh, inform the board and request an emergency temporary deputy clerk for my office uh, due to some unforeseen thing. Uh, we won't go into all of the details, but the new person, uh, this actually has to start changing today. So it would be imperative and I hope that you agree uh, to vote to let me have this temporary employee and whatever question you may have. You can ask me one-on-one or we can talk about it later. But right now, my office, uh, needing an emergency temp- right?
Yes. Sure. You have someone right now that you have placed?
I do.
You do? Are you asking for, what amount are you asking for?
I'm sorry?
What you started? What amount?
Same start, big, same, same amount, nothing changes for pay rate or anything, that she will be a temporary employee, no insurance or anything.
So are you telling me the amount that the other one is making?
Exactly.
Or the twelve sixty, that was the twelve, what, twelve dollars, that we started? Or the twelve sixty that was twelve, what, twelve dollars that we started making?
Oh, twelve sixty, is that what we started?
Twelve, twelve dollars?
Yeah.
Twelve dollars, that's what you asking for?
Yes. No, she, no, she moved to, it's in.
Okay, so mine is different.
So we could use her, have somebody different. I have a application which I'm gonna process and her accept.
You not probably need to go and be on a resource to get some paperwork done. And so probably have to be there today, but we probably can, um, do the motion pending your paperwork. Uh, make a motion and go get.
Me, her paperwork?
Her paperwork, the papers I got.
Being processed, I have to be that, you know, resource processing right now pending your, your receipt. When I say emergency, I really meant. Emergency. You know, the weekend, we had a very bad weekend and I got that certificate that has to be out in the next wonderful hour. There's only one person can do that in my office and she trained in the girl, uh, replacement.
Okay, now you did say this. You want her to make the same as the other person, but our starting pays twelve dollars. So is that okay, the twelve dollars an hour?
For this employee, yeah.
Yes.
She can build her way up to the twelve sixty, but whatever is right here now is what we want.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion, I see, I was probably just gonna give a second. Second by who? Wilson? Uh, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I was happy.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Park number reports. Who wants to go?
Good morning, Mary Kay Dory of Adams County Court. I have an M O U that needs to be signed. It does have some money involved with it, but I've also attached a, um, email that we received from A O C. It's all grant funded. So I just need that to get signed. I brought it for y'all today. And per the judge, I wanted to ask where we stood on our last request for our graduated tiers for our detention workers.
Hang on one second.
Sure.
I'm gonna get a motion for, for signing the M O U.
Let me ask what the, what it was for.
Sure. This is, uh, between Adams County Youth Drug Court and Family Drug Court with Helping Hands to provide our therapy and our group sessions with our clients.
Motion, I see, I was ready to, just gonna give a second, I see, I was. Yeah, any discussion?
Mr. President, my only question is, do I, should I have to look over that or what?
We can do any later rule. Do y'all look over it? Is this similar to what y'all done with Helping Hands before?
Yes.
A lot, I'll make sure. Um, and can basically the adult drug court ask basically for the same agreement with Helping Hands on there as well? The judge could make it here. I'll let y'all finish this motion first.
All in favor? All opposed?
As I said, the judge Sanders said, well, she couldn't be here because she has a term in Wilkinson County and she asked basically the same agreement, the same agreement. It's covered by the grant funds. So you wanna go ahead and approve that as well?
Let's finish, we have our.
Sure.
So my second question was, uh, I'm not sure, I missed the last meeting where we stand with our request for graduating, saying graduated tiers for our detention workers. We, our original request was we were not going to ask for any more money out of our budget, but we just wanted to reinstate the graduated tiers on our employees in the detention center.
The question we had was the additional revenues that we're getting from the state, shoot, not the state, I'm sorry, from Louisiana and the other counties. Is that supposed to pay for those increases?
Uh, not, I didn't ask for that, but that is, so we do, we are bringing in money because we do have a lot of, um, detainees that are Louisiana based and so we are receiving a lot of money in our detention center for that. But what I've actually proposed is I have requested to add these, but without changing our budget because I believe we can do it with our current budget. Um, this last year we ended with still, I think we were a little high at thirty thousand in our, uh, last budget that we did not actually use. So I think that even adding these in, it's not going to go above our already allotted budgets.
You heard the request. Can I get a motion? So, motion, I see, brother Wilson, give me a second.
Second.
Second, I see, brother Hodge, any discussion?
You have said. You got the money and the budget. And it's not dealing with the additional money that you're getting from, uh, housing, Louisiana, or whoever, uh, kids, right?
Correct.
Okay, and you familiar with what she's trying to do and it's in her budget?
I, I don't, I can't say it because this is why I don't give raises. Well, it is raises, it, I know, that's.
Well, don't we think motion need to be pending, uh, this department getting with the county administrator and make sure that the money in the budget to do what she need to do?
So you saying the money is not in the budget?
I'm saying it is. I, I went through for September, saw everything that would get spent through our, out of our whole budget. Now it's still less than thirty thousand dollars that wouldn't be able to cover that this coming year. I mean, it's not gonna spend. I don't think we're even gonna get that high for it, but it's there. Uh, my backup is I am taking in money from detention center if that had to come through there to add to it, but not asking that this, this time.
Can I say something? When I, when I do the budget for certain departments, overtime is expected in those departments. During the part, yes. E nine one one.
Sure.
Is expected for overtime. So there's an amount allotted in the budget for overtime. So I guess when Mary Kay is saying she's allocate, adding up the employees and their salary, what they make. So that amount that she's talking about is the amount that's allotted for overtime. So I guess she's saying she's gonna make it work. I, I don't know, I, how to make it work because you don't know.
Did I expend, did we expend that whole line under personnel in, um, this last year?
You might not have. I don't know, but I'm just saying.
Right now I have an employee, I have them starting at twelve dollars. With the raise that was given, I have my people that have been there over a year at twelve dollars thirteen cents. And comparatively to around the states, Warren County starts at thirteen dollars an hour. Rankin County starts at thirteen oh two and after certification move up to sixteen dollars an hour. Alcorn County fifteen dollars an hour. Forest County fifteen oh two per hour. And Lee County fourteen fifty per hour. I'm just saying, we're at twelve and twelve thirteen for our detention officers.
What was this, what's that raise you're asking for? Twelve dollars?
So what we wanna do is so our starting detention guards still stay at twelve dollars. Six months increase to twelve seventy-five. And after one year continued employment, an increase to thirteen fifty. We're still under what a lot of them make around the states.
I just think that, Angel, we need time to look to see if it's within her this year's program budget.
Sure.
Based on incomes and so forth is all that.
We had this in place beforehand. We had this in place beforehand and then once the raises came last year, um, it just went away. We didn't understand why it just went away. So all we're doing is trying to re-implement it.
Well, what, what happened is they're starting paying at the beginning was, uh, like nine something an hour or whatever. And when we did the increase before, everybody else up to to twelve dollars. And, you know, I told you from the beginning that it was gonna be this right here, you know, because there was some people who were already here that got five percent. That was already at, you know, just at twelve dollars. And when they got five percent, it didn't boost them up that much. As compared to the ones who was making what the ten dollars, they got the two dollars step raise. I knew that was gonna be a problem. I explained that was gonna be a problem because there's a problem in every department. I can't say, I can, I can get with Mary Kay. But I can't forecast how much overtime is gonna be in that department because I don't know. You know, somebody may call out or you may get sick and they're gonna, another employee is gonna get that overtime. You can't forecast overtime. So we can get together and it's still gonna be.
A prediction, just like every other.
Is it something that they can be watched quarterly?
But, um, speaking of around here, uh, I remember the administrator and sheriff, uh, one day last week and some of these things I was gonna bring to the board and since this came up, um, I, I mean, I don't know how the board feel about this, but I wanted to put something in place that when it come for departments, come like we asking for money and stuff like that, if a supervisor could be involved and we have a meeting with the administrator before we come to the public meeting. So we'll know if we can stand it or not, if we can be able to do it or if we can't. Because the administrator is the person who knows where the money is. And I think if we were, put something for all departments, when you start coming asking if it's gonna increase the budget or all requested money, meet with the administrator prior to the public meeting. And then we will have, we will know if we can and we not. And that's what, and, and not just, not just saying that everything going right. That's why I said a supervisor will be involved in a meeting with y'all. That's not saying yes or no, but we'll have a better idea of what's going on like today. You asking for the money. Not that we don't wanna do it because we understand that, but at the same time, we entrusted to a budget and trying to make sure we don't break it. So we not saying no, but if we sit down beforehand and forecast and see if we have the money, I think that'll save us a lot of time and that'll say, make us secure, we'll know if we can or we can't. And that's not the supervisor. If, if it's not with the supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we put a policy in place that we will meet with the administrator and supervisor prior to the meeting when we ask for budget request or budget go free.
Motion, I see, I was, yeah, I didn't say, I was, I was, I was, any discussion?
I mean, I don't have a problem with supervisor, yeah, it's already a, a, a format that we supposed to follow during the budget time. It'll alleviate all this stuff, but seem like, uh, we always adopt a budget. And then people come in and want to increase a budget after we adopt a budget. Just call it July. You got July, you got August. And you got pretty much, no, you got June, you got July and you got August. To get all of this kind of stuff straight. We shouldn't be in October, um, something that we didn't adopt during the budget. When, when if you adopt what they give you in their book that they give us, all this will be eliminated. But my only question is this. Uh, I heard her say she gave us some additional money and it's not part of the money that they get from, uh, Louisiana or wherever they house those other, uh, young people over there. I'm glad it's not because if they decide that they don't wanna sell them no more and we give a raise pending the money that we give from, get from somebody else and then they don't sell them no more, then we gonna have to go find that money somewhere else. So I'm glad it's not part of that money. Thank you, Mr. President.
I, I just, just say after that, I, this is our third time coming to the board asking about this same thing. So it wasn't that I waited till October to ask.
Alright, so there's a motion on the floor. All in favor? All opposed?
Probably have a form in place like you with your raises too. It's been checked off. That way kinda streams later on that end. Do you wanna?
Yes.
Do the tier pending the, pending that form or that, that, uh, meeting?
I tell you what, a tier, mention, check, and it's, it's made us to go through all those tiers.
As long as it's based on your years of experience or whatever.
So, so, Mr. President, I'm gonna ask this question. So since we doing tiers, so we can open this tier up to all departments. So you just can't say you open a tier up to not a department? And we got all these other departments that's trying to do the same thing. So we gotta be careful. You don't treat one department different from you treat the other department. Because they submitted tiers too.
I'm not against it, I'm just saying.
And I, and I spoke, we talked about this, uh, uh, with Scott the other day. Tears as, as supervisors were able to say, you can't do that. It opened it up to all departments if you do tears. Tears, I think it's not legal. You have a check as long as certain department can get tears. And I think it may be law enforcement. So you need to kinda look at that and see. And, and, uh, they would be considered as law enforcement too over here. So you need to look at that and see. I think I talked to you last week about that because we was having all these problems with everybody coming here talking about tiers. So check, you know, check into that part.
Mr. President, I'm gonna have to leave a little early, but I was gonna, uh, say this, uh, in my report, but I'm gonna say it now. Uh, if everybody just can hold on just for a couple of months and pray that we get our one point eight million dollars back from that hammer, then yes, look, I was gonna recommend that all our employees get a raise. Because we are having funding for to give them a raise. Right now, we just don't know. And I think, and I really think we're gonna get our money back. So that's additional one point eight million dollars in our budget. And we be able to not only give your department, sheriff department, E nine one one, we'll be able to compensate all of our employees at the same time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, so, well, one of the first questions asked her, is it in your budget? Her answer was yes. She did have the money, okay? And also, uh, my other question was gonna be, can you keep up with that quarterly or something? Make sure you're not overrunning.
Oh, sure.
And, uh, and, and report back and if, if it is getting out of whack, we gotta do something different. We need to know about it.
Yes.
That's all I had.
That's all I have to, thank you.
Uh, next, this is Matt, if you got, you wanna go?
I'm gonna do my report for September first to now on the calls that we had. That's gonna be Natchez P D had one thousand two hundred and nine. Natchez Fire Department had thirty-one. And Adams City so had six forty-five. The rest of my report was on behalf of the E nine one dispatchers. It was to be determined for executive session if that's okay with you all.
Yes, I understand that grammar.
Ms. Matt, did you, uh, did you call breakdown on fire department for county, city?
We had those too. These some getting too.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Park number reports, Mr. Martin.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Miss Martin. I'm the person first for the Natchez, the Adams County Board Supervisors. We need to be opening, that's the safety opening for the shouts for the safe room. We only got one beat again that was from Hopkins Construction. And they went down about seventeen thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Well, who was it? Who was that?
Hopkins Construction. I have a copy for you all.
Thank you. Yeah, I think at this time we're gonna reject that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Good morning, boys. Brad, Brad, I don't care, you make the record. Uh, got a couple things for you. Uh, fall severe, uh, prior to this week, it'll be October seventeenth after the twenty-second. And on the nineteenth, we're gonna have a county by tornado drill at nine fifteen. And we want all the departments to participate. Uh, we, we need this, we need them to participate because we need to find out if there's any, uh, officers that don't have a safe place. And if you have turned it out, I know for years we've been finagling it, you know, you're gonna let it get your car and go home. Uh, so we need to make sure every department, uh, participates. Uh, so, we need to make sure every department, uh, participate in this, make sure they know where their safe spots at, and we need them to actually go to that spot because if that spot is too small, we need to know that, so we need to revise our plan, so. Uh, need supervisor helping with that, let's make sure we do that. They only gonna last maybe like five, five to ten minutes, so if we can spread five to ten minutes, uh, even the court out, Sheriff, if you can do that. Uh, because like I said, if you got people in the court out and something happen, they need to know where to go to. So, we need to see exactly what we're looking at, so that we, we can revise our plans, any question on that? Uh.
Give that date, time.
That's gonna be, uh, October the nineteenth at nine fifteen A.M.
We need to arrange it, let her send something out on that.
Right, and, you know, and, and I also ask the supervisor, if you can't, just go around observe during the time, see if people actually doing, we need to make sure people are actually doing it, you know, so that'll help me out in my office. Also, we help you guys see what we need to do.
So, you gonna let us know where we need to go, each department, right?
Yes. Uh, also, we're asking county residents to be safe when burning outdoors, I notice getting cool, everybody will start burning outside, burning brush. So, you know, we haven't been getting any smitten out of range, so we just have to let everybody to be careful, we're not, you know, I don't foresee it for the burn landing, uh, but, you know, we just want everybody to be responsible enough for the burn. Because, you know, we getting a lot of calls, people taking down the burn van, but down in the burn van, just want everybody to be careful, okay? Because we, we are short some trucks in the county, so it's fun. Uh, also, I wanna request travel for myself and, uh, Tom and you, uh, to attend the second part of our River Bend Nuclear Power Plant fifty mile injection pathway exercise. We completed the first one, uh, learned some stuff, so now we gotta go back for the full skill exercise, and that's gonna be October the eighteenth and nineteenth at that bridge.
You heard your question, Mr. Bradford, I think that was very important, this field out. Motion, I think, on the grade, second question, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay. Next, I'm gonna request travel, we gotta attend the Mississippi Civil Defense Emergency Management Conference, that gonna be November fifteenth.
Hang on just a second, Mr. President. Supervisor Gangs, just all of the good point. Are you not gonna be here for that drive?
That's the hole in ten.
Uh-huh.
That's the hole in ten. See if they do it in our time, so if the case, yeah, I gotta lead you to the place, so that'll, that'll work fine.
Okay, nah, you know what I'm saying, I'm, oh, right, you're my nose, okay, I'm saying, October, next month, five, you, you say you gonna be out there, I was like that.
I, I just wanna see my group going through because, you know, I see it's gonna have to set the leaves, when I'm gone, sir.
Okay, practice music, I, I wanna make sure I didn't need you wrong, I don't.
Uh, we did, so don't know nothing, I have some openings on Twitter, so, I'll get there. Good luck, I just messed with it. Yeah, my next one is a request travel, uh, to attend the Mississippi Civil Defense Emergency Management Conference. Uh, that's gonna be November fifteenth through the seventeenth in Choctaw, Mississippi. Uh, that's gonna be for myself, Mr. Daryl Smith, Mr. Bree Cook, Mr. Scott Erwin, and Mr. Sam Martin.
You heard, Wes and Brad, I think that was all the question. Second supervisor, gang, second supervisor, right, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
On that, we do normally try to invite a supervisor, though, she already got a hand up.
That's one on the ten, I was gonna just ask you about it.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna get out first, yeah, yeah, I didn't know if you were, know that you're not, so, yeah, that's gonna be in Choctaw, Mississippi, so.
That's what you call inviting yourselves, huh?
I was a ten, that's a dope one, it's, it's always good, that's why, I was just gonna ask him about it, that same one, so, I like to be active today.
You heard, request.
It's, they always say this about.
You have the motion. Motion, supervisor, oh, second by, second by supervisor, gang, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I, I do add, if you win by supervisor, that do be donated back to the emergency management park.
Oh, that's been used.
Yeah, I know, I gave the supervisor a great last time, okay, that's all I have for the question for the board.
Thank you, Brad. Open up, whoever wants to go.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm coming to you in, uh, in the property area. I have time for the senior in Naxxus this year, October sixteenth and nineteenth, and I just needed to ask permission for myself and Sharkey Martin, the purchasing, purchase team.
Motion, supervisor, hunters, second by supervisor, gangs, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Is that called the, uh, registration fee?
Yes.
Already here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, not having to travel this year, it's just registration, let us do something to ask, okay?
But, yeah, that's what. But I guess sometimes I'll be using my part too.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
One thousand seventy-seven requests in September. Uh, a result of three hundred forty-eight, uh, nine one one requests, two hundred forty-five transports, that eight minute, eleven second average in the city for a ninety-one percent compliance, uh, thirteen twenty-two in the county for eighty-nine percent, and we did manage to bring the times down a little bit, well, they're only a few seconds, but the seconds count. Uh, seventy-eight refusals, seventeen no patient contacts, and eight cancellations. Uh, we stayed right around, we had eleven twelve site call status. Uh, two hundred and seven times, we had multiple ambulances on calls at the same time, or simultaneous in the county for the month, uh, three flights straight from the field, those were all high level patients that needed to go to a level two or a level one facility. Um, spent a hundred and fifty-nine hours, uh, on the wall at the hospital. Uh, typically, we're busy, they're busy, which means we can't offload patients. My workaround for that is, I send crewed ones up there, and I have them babysit patients on my gurneys while I get extra gurneys and put those ambulances back in the road as quick as we can. When those events occur, I notify the, um, police chief and the fire chief, because typically, the, the bulk of them are coming from the, the city of Naxxus. Uh, so I keep them in the loop when that's happening. Uh, but you're looking at around almost twenty thousand, nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars in payroll impact that I spent last month just taking care of patients on the wall at the hospital. Uh, zero true members out with COVID. We're still continuing with the silent bonus for paramedics, which is doing really good for us. I mean, like I said, our stacking volume is, is higher now than it was prior to COVID, and that's where we're, we're a unique little situation in the state of Mississippi right now, if we can say that. One of the things I wanna make y'all aware of, uh, the, we've got Halloween trunk or treat that we're gonna do at all locations on the hill up by the mall, four twenty dollar junket. We're gonna do it on October thirty-first, uh, it's a request of the crews, uh, that we put this on to get kids a safe place to go. We'll have several vehicles lined up, and they're doing their own little challenge, uh, where each person's gonna be, I won't get into trunk or treat stuff, but they're gonna be dressing their cars up and wearing outfits and everything else, and serving the kids as they come through. Not be open to the public, and just like I said, it's a nice safe location for them to come, and get a little bit of candy. And they're not gonna be getting loose candies or homemade, you know, popcorn balls, nothing like that. It's gonna be sealed candies that the parents can feel are safe for that event. Uh, that's gonna be from five o'clock until six thirty on the thirty-first. Uh, two events coming up this month, obviously, that are bigger events here. We're providing our communications trailer to the county, uh, as we always do for these events. We, we, we loaned out to the EMA, which means we can bring all the departments up into one communications trailer, the, oh, be an adjunct to nine one one during that event, where we're not overwhelming the nine one one operations center during those events. Uh, any, any questions for me, that's my report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Uh, first thing I have, uh, Marilyn, thank you, will make you happy. Last week, I met, uh, Rocky Angley on Morgan Town Road, and was fighting MLK, and he did prices on, uh, getting that fire ass following Morgan Town there, from the glass company, and on, uh, MLK, uh, twenty-three thousand, four ninety, and he does have a small company, so. Here to bid, uh, for the year, but I just wanna.
Twenty-three thousand?
For both sides, for Morgan Town and MLK.
I just lose.
Yeah, yeah, he combined, but I'm just saying, I think it was like ten, hundred, that one. We gotta dig it out and pack it, and come back with fifty-four vehicles. So, anyhow, with that being said, uh, next thing I have, I've got a Walker Lee Jones, who's gonna come back part-time, uh, will start October the fifth, um, his rate of pay will be eighteen dollars an hour, sixteen thousand nine ninety-two a year, part-time.
Rest is a support, pay that change, right?
Correct, I'll get to that.
You heard your question, Mr. Allen, have motion, supervisor, gangs, second, supervisor, Gray, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, this is part-time, yeah?
Part-time, correct.
No benefits, no.
No benefits, no.
No you.
I wanna, go ahead.
Got a question, is it twenty hours or is it forty hours?
No, part-time, two, about two days a week, just depending on what it works out, for about two days a week, depending on weather and things like that. He came, sent sixteen thousand nine ninety-two every year, and that July, July.
All in favor? Uh, all opposed?
Next thing I have is, uh, Devin Sims, um, his six months bill of October fifth, he go from thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty, or thirty thousand one sixty, I got three of them, we get all three of them.
All three, yeah.
Okay, the next one's Isaac King, uh, he's, his is October nineteenth, he's from thirteen to fourteen, or twenty-nine, one twenty. The next one's, uh, Jane Jones, his is October nineteenth, from thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty, or thirty thousand one sixty.
These need to be sized as well.
Yeah, I saw.
Probably sure.
No, not on my rates, I can do, I get approved when I can get them hired, to bring them back for fold. I'll get them sized.
Do you hire, do you, do you?
Yeah, I do it, I bring them for a fold when I do that. That's all.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, motion, supervisor, any second, supervisor, any second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
And I submitted a new site of last week, Dunbar Value for EJDP project, to get it done on August twenty-fifth, rain event, and, uh, just gonna bring that for a fold too, and the site will be called Dunbar Value. Oak Ridge.
Is that a road?
No, correct, it's a road. It's, uh, it's off of, uh, Oak Ridge, which is where it's located. Alright, uh, thank you. Next thing I have, we got paperwork signed for the four sites, uh, last week, the two more Magnificent Blues, one on Lower Water Bridge, one on Lincoln Heights, sites, uh, for EJDPs. Um, the Lower Water Bridge site has broken down before by a party, site get it, uh, took care of, so, gonna beat, uh, Mike Green, we been our chairs out there tomorrow, and contractors about putting it to the site, trying to go and get it fixed. Uh, you know, we had a job fair last week, uh, Meg went to the job fair. I think we, uh, get five or six applications out, and once they come up and ask, and she told her about benefits, and what the pay rate was, that everybody want application, but I think she was five total, and she had handed out during that job fair, thirty. And I submitted a list of roads that we approved for the asphalt and striping, uh, when we first started this project, I've added eight to ten roads to that list, uh, page has the list of the added roads, and I added two striping roads, I don't add two striping roads, but the list of asphalt roads that, uh, APAC's been working on, that's a chunky out, uh, with the total price of what it's cost to overlay those sixty roads there, that's how I have it. That's all I have.
Yes, you all worked it through, that gonna change, which pretty soon done. Where's the money sign?
Correct, but I'm just saying, the things I was working on with the board, I need to go ahead and get started on, and I just wanna bring it before y'all, that y'all know. Yes, ma'am.
This is not found, huh?
No, it's not found. It's just.
I'm just saying, it's not approved, you're just.
So, but, uh, you know, we said we could add to it at any time, and we, you know, I've added about nine or ten roads to, added two roads to the striping, and I just wanna bring it before you, before we, before we know how we.
As long as they all came from the road written, correct, then we should be fine.
Correct.
If we spread, then we did spread that across the, if you wanna approve it.
Yeah, this is, this is.
You can do the add-on. Yeah.
Do you have a motion, spreading, moving this across the?
That hit.
Morgan Town there.
Yeah, for, 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 for.
Motion, supervisor, gangs, second, supervisor, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Yeah.
Well, uh, one other thing, that, well, rather, I know the engineer is covered, I was in a meeting on last week with, uh, the driver, Dan F, and one something that I wanted, another thing I want to recommend to the board, and, and going forward, I would like to see that, uh, when we do government program, it's a list, a program, once the program is finished, it has to be a paper submitted by the engineer firm that we can get our reimbursement money back. So, you know, as the other meeting, we was, uh, summoning, uh, reimbursement form that had not been submitted, uh, so what I would like to see going place, uh, I'm just, that's often, I don't ask the board, before we make our last payment to any engineer firm, that just want, on sites that we get government money, we should make our last payment on that set paid, it's submitted for us to get our money. I said something I want to bring across the board, and I think, not to, not to beg, no, that's an end firm, but just to make sure, once we get out, and the paperwork is submitted, and we get our money from the government, as we pay for the job being finished, and so, that's not to hold up any money, that's just to make sure all of this serious paperwork is put in place, so we can be getting our reimbursement while we paying them that money also. So, that's it, as to, uh, board decides, that I will make a motion, uh, that, uh, our engineer firms will submit our federal, uh, pay statement before we give them the last payment of each job, that's.
Have motion, supervisor, gangs, any second, second, supervisor, Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
And with that said, Mr. Gang, these other two sites that, uh, Main Street and Brookview have been submitted, I spoke with Brent this morning, uh, he has, uh, submitted those two for reimbursement, and when I M S gets up here, we'll check on Blue Hill, the Hendrix Heights, and like I said, he did some other stuff, we get the fees, but I was gonna wait to.
Okay, okay, well, I just wanted to bring that, that part, uh, so I do know.
Yeah, we had, yeah, I spoke with you, people should have that, okay, like, so, had submitted.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Uh, giving up there on some just projects. E W P group for contractors, perform fifty percent of the clearing for Liberty Road. They perform all of the clearing for Prince Edition, um, they're currently working on, uh, Liberty Road at this time, as, once they do the clearing on Prince Edition, um, there'll another product of site that need more attention. So, we have, um, submitted a new design to the, uh, the contractor. It's still within the original budget for that site, um, the new design, and so they'll, once they get done with the road, they'll move to Prince Edition and do the, uh, the new design. Um, with that being said, they did submit a pay application number three, uh, for the clearing at Liberty Road, Prince Edition, as well as the grassing that they finished on Equipment Road, and the addition work that was done on West Erie and South Palestine Road, um, in the amount of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Uh, so I'm requesting that we, uh, recommend a payment to Camo Construction at amount thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents, as well as requesting pay for C E and I services in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. as well as requesting pay for CNI Services in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved. Motion my supervisor Gaines, second my supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, uh, all opposed, I say.
Alright. Um, for the second striping project that we, uh, currently have, uh, ongoing, uh, we have a planned hand inspection for state day on Wednesday at one P M. to just go over the, the plan that we submitted for the Liberty Road side.
Which sites?
That would be, um, Liberty Road, North Palestine, and Frank Field Road.
Some of.
Motion my supervisor, I don't think we did.
On North Palestine, we know that, uh.
I took out the two point four.
Say again, took out, that we're all laying this track, okay, thank you.
Um, Burke Road, P S N E plan was submitted to say day, um, that's usually our final submitted before we get permission advertised, however, we have not completely incorporated it, because, um, based on email I received, we're waiting on the Mississippi Department of Archives history to complete their review, and the last email I got is, they're having a staffing shortage and a surplus of cultural resource requests, so they will get to our request as soon as they can.
M dot gave me the name of their right-of-way person as well, to help us get that right-of-way on the U.S. Wildlife and Fisheries, as she talked to me, I talked to her, maybe, other say, Wednesday or Thursday, she said she'd get back to me with it. And I need you to talk with, one of them, kind of does their, their right-of-way, but they wanna talk to you about the fence, so I'll try to get you to contact them, make sure that they, okay, that's due, although there's another one that's a little reluctant, so we'll probably have to talk to them to get talking about the project and whatnot.
So when you do tell me, I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Thanks, you're welcome. And then, if that's your report, just, you heard the motion about us, when we close out the EWP's, we need to have that reimbursement money ready to go to.
One, one they have is, uh, what I have to do is Cleo to Hendrick Heights.
That's right, I know he's not, they're, they're not, I wasn't saying anybody's slinking on, on reimbursements, I'm just saying, just as an FYI, I see that.
Alright, that's one. Uh, while we were talking about Burke Road, I talked with the board before the meeting, I received, uh, something from Alan Laird in Southwest Planning this morning, that Scott Kreisler with Wildlife Manager has been trying to get in touch with somebody for a week concerning Burke Road, and I'm wondering if it might be about York Road, because they're, they would be involved in it also. So I worried that email would be you and Angel, so.
I, I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Alright, uh, M C W I grant, we submitted for both Mortar Town Road and Deer Creek Road, Mortar Town Road submitted on Thursday, Deer Creek Road submitted on Friday, so both of those did get submitted.
President. Um, on that project, on that grant, is there a deadline for that grant, or as, when it be accepted or not accepted?
They will, they will make, um, they will make notification in December.
In December?
Yes, ma'am, who have been awarded, who have not.
There'll be a second round of them too, around that same time.
It, it'll be six months later, in the next second round, the next second portal open in six months.
Okay, and also, okay, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if this needs to be, or, or you are, on that Liberty Road project, EWP project that you all are doing, um, it is so broad in that area at night, and at this time, the road does not have stripes or anything that people can see, um, is there any way that that project that you're doing, that you all made, because orange cones around it, so they can see, so that it can run right off into that?
I can, I can ask the contractor to have those available, they have barrels to look flat in on, I can see if they have those available, if not, I may.
Where at?
And Liberty Road wants to be posted on barrels, so just.
Prevents somebody running off in there, it's so doggy.
Yeah. But we'll work with the contracts and the road department to try to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next is the twenty-six Cleo deal, uh, we submitted the reimbursement draft, Mr. Moore, for twenty-six Cleo, for them to look at it, make sure everything is fine. And I made it previously, in instances of this nature, usually someone from the administration or the chancellor clerk handle the reimbursement, I was not aware that the engineer does that here, if I had known that, then I would have been taken care of at that time. Now that I know that, it will be taken care of immediately following the closing of our various projects.
They just approved it, this, you know, you, you missed it, that, that decision about reimbursement, so it's just.
I, I understand that, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I don't think they expect you to fix that when they just decided to do it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Ford, uh, who, who responsibility is?
Alright, in my experience being an engineer, I've worked three different counties besides Adams County, and those instances, the county administrator or the clerk were responsible, and all financial documents, and engineer were responsible for engineering, and that way we took care of the project, and when the project was over, we gave all documentation related to the project to whoever that person was in administration portion of the project. So, I understand it's difficult, but I'm just saying that's how it works, so I was operating in that manner. If I don't get a notification or email saying that this is not, that's document need to be submitted, I don't know that document needs to be submitted.
Right.
Yeah, again, they just decided to do that, so.
Well, the reason I asked the question, because, uh, when he made his answer, he, he, he made it seem like this is, uh, is not normal for, well, he was going to another place, he just, you know, the place, he wasn't responsible for doing that.
Right.
And in Adams County, he is, so.
And I think he's, the county administrator in the past, actually submits, it's just engineer would fill out whatever it is on the paperwork, and then they would submit that, or I think that's how they did it.
It's about that, but, you know, this was the rationale behind that, uh, in our meeting, you were there, we had three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of my correct land on the table, then if the paperwork wasn't gonna be submitted, we would get two hundred and eighty thousand of that money. There was gonna, somebody was gonna lose, we was gonna lose our money from the project, and we being paid, you know, my biggest thing is, I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming that, the communication, we can't allow, and I said it's your fault, but it's just, we need to communicate that these papers need to be submitted to the federal government, we don't need to do the projects that the government pays for, and then we lose the money. And that's why I was trying to put something in place, just to make sure, when we pay money, we make sure that our reimbursement come back, so the county can get the money that the government has already approved for, and, and I'm not saying that, so, the necessary paperwork, you know, if we can just get it submitted, so we can get ours, and I think, that's the basic, we're trying to get a good communication, who do what, so everybody be on the same page.
Yeah, I wasn't criticizing you at all, Al, because they just decided to do it, this, this meeting, so, you know.
The last thing I have is, last, yeah, the last thing I have is, uh, previously, we asked to look into putting, um, speedhumps on Cherry Park Road and on Colony Drive, Surfaces, Drive, and, um, we have developed an area joint, I didn't find the location where they go, and if I can get approval to, uh. If, uh, a form, a form approval to perform this work, you'll submit these drawings to the road department, I understand that'd be self-performing, so if I could just get, uh, approval to have the road department self-perform installation of the speedhumps on Cherry Park Road and Colony Drive, make a motion.
Motion my supervisor Wilson.
Can I ask a question?
I was saying I have a motion before.
I say.
Second my supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
All discussion, Mr. President, all discussion, I have, have, have they filled out a petition over that?
No. No, I don't know.
You have to be recognized by the president to speak, and they don't take just comments at large.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This, this application came, you know, I'm correct?
That's right, yeah.
It came because, through the first thing step is to do the application petition, and then we hand it over to the engineer to make sure it's still safe, so the people have to want it, or not people for the application have to want it, then it has to go to the engineer to still make sure it's safe, and then if the engineer says it's safe, it comes through the board for the final decision.
I, I did ask you that.
It's been a while since we had it, but that's, that's just, for everyone.
I'm just long enough.
All in favor, all opposed, I say.
Um, are you any more questions for me, all of them?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I gotta go, really, I, I don't know if I'm big with active questions, uh, so, could we get an update on, between you and the attorney of, on Mortar Town Road, where are we, and, uh, when are we gonna, uh, have in mind, when we gonna get this project started?
Yeah, so they're, send an email out to everybody, and there's a checklist of things that we need to do to get the M dot number as far as the earmark money, and it's just various things we have to get turned in, which shouldn't take too long to get turned in, uh, as far as the application on, that's for the first phase, with the earmark phase, the stormwater phase.
Mr. President, I wanna know about the part of phase one.
Yes, sir.
I, I need to know exactly when are we gonna get started on phase one, when we gonna break some ground on phase one?
I can't tell you when we're gonna break ground on it, but I can tell you that we are making the process of getting a, was it M dot number, reference number, we have to fill out those stuff that's in that, that checklist, get that filled out and submitted.
I don't, we have to.
It shouldn't take as long to get all that in, because the work's all been done, it's just collecting information and sending it on, we do need a resolution, is that, have you gotten a resolution yet for the application?
And also sent the, uh, the map over that we requested.
Yes, sir. So he'd already gotten a, he just needed a roadmap of what portion of Mortar Town Road was in, uh, we needed a resolution to, uh, I, we basically got, make the president, the one person, uh, and whatnot, to have a resolution, if we can go ahead and adopt. I can't get your timeline, but, you know, you can take it.
You saying we got a checklist, I, I wanna see the checklist, and I wanna see things being checked out, checklist, so we can get down to the nitty-gritty and find out when actually we gonna get started with this, 'cause we got a whole lot of people in this community, like, ain't not gonna happen on Mortar Town Road, I know it's been close to twenty years, Mortar Town Road gonna get done, but I still need to inform the people, and, and he need to get the right information, so when they ask us, we gonna have something to tell. So, this checklist you're talking about.
Email it, but I'll print it out for you, and it was sent to George May, I think Robbie, you know, Warren, should have gone, so.
So everything on that list is taken care of, or we in the process of taking care of it?
You know, it's just sent out late last week, so, if it's not been filled out, it should be filled out relatively soon.
Well, we need to get, this emergency, we need to get it filled out as soon as possible, thank you, Mr. President.
Did you grab that, President?
It's just phase one, right?
Yes, sir. And in phase two, we made the application, the stormwater ran, finish it.
Long as, long as we, phase one, the matter actually is the same thing, when we gonna have the ground break, break on phase one. So, I wanna be able to tell him in two or three weeks.
I don't wanna lie to you and say any time until I get a time from him, God.
Yeah, you go, now, I, I'm sorry to say that, stay on your guys, or we can get whatever we need.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions, Mr. Ford? Appreciate you all, thank you. Come up?
Down we go.
Yeah.
Good morning, Lord.
Morning.
First of all, my agenda, I've got, uh, for group three, EWP's, we need a request for a change order to add sixteen days to this contract, for the contractor, and basically, it was just a whole month of August got rained out, and that's the, the reasoning for this.
Explain the day it's brought from, the day it stops from, sixteen days and ten.
Looks like August twentieth to September fifth.
Correct, so that deadline, if it gets accepted, it open with anyhow.
Correct, and they've been warned about liquidated damages.
And that's two hundred of that?
I believe so, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but I think, I think that's right.
You heard the request, can you, could you repeat that again?
The, the reason for the change order?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, because it was six, it was a whole bunch of days in August, I mean, I think y'all remember it raining, probably every day in August.
I'm talking about the dates.
The dates are Sep, August twentieth to September fifth.
He just said that this already over, so.
Right, so they're in liquidated damages, assuming y'all enforce those, or anything.
Oh, yeah. So, Scott, how do we handle it, uh, we wanna get approved from August the twentieth to September the fifth, those days are already gonna pass.
You must approve that those are rain days?
Yes.
Now, the board would need to make a determination of whether those are rain days or, or not.
I don't, but, but, we have some land days, but it wasn't all the, the month of September, that they could have finished, uh, this is October, we talked about here today.
Finished, yeah.
And it's good, I think.
We had twenty-five good days, or I was, uh, pretty unusual this time.
Yeah, it's not a rain day, you can't say, you can't find, it's not a rain delay, it's not a rain.
But it wasn't August, I mean, they just extended sixteen days from August the twentieth was their deadline to September the fifth, and that sixteen days was in that period, it's still up, whether you accept it or not, the liquidated damage will stop, it starts September the fifth. That's what I'm saying, I'm saying those sixteen extensions are already up anyway, and they're still not finished, right? And you can't find it.
We have a month of September, wouldn't go right.
The contract said, it gives, provides for an excuse on rain delays, obviously, and there's built-in rain delays on the state day little schedule that they referenced anyway, uh, and if, but if you find that was rain, they couldn't work beyond those, those scheduled rain days, it's worth to make it, but you can't take a finding if there wasn't a rain delay, I don't remember it being, uh, that much, and I don't think that's what they're asking for. Now, as far as liquidated damages, if they didn't complete on time, if they're supposed to, then if you did not hold them to be liquidated damages, it's not discretionary, it's provided for in the contract, that would be a donation, so you need to hold them to the two hundred dollar stack. You don't have, you don't have a choice for it, do you?
He, he just, that's essential, what, other raining is, 'cause he gonna, I would be there, what about three weeks of rain, you probably, two weeks of rain, he, he done asked us, for right now, he.
It's like, it's been a pro of his day.
He gonna, he gonna, he's gonna ask you, that he gonna, sorry, liquidated damage, after the, they said, he don't, probably, but he said, September, but he saying the days that were raining, then, you know, they should be on the rise before, but the rain, the days that it rained, it just give a credit for it.
Alright, can I get a motion?
So moved.
First my supervisor Gaines, second? Second my supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, I say.
Second thing I have is, uh.
Hang on, second thing, are they not under an extension right now?
I don't think so. Well, they're paying for that, September fifth.
They're paying for September fifth. When they blinded on COVID.
Really not major, so. That's, 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 we got the, and that was last extension, we were gonna get the, the EWP, you know, to the water source.
This is group three, three two.
This is group three here, they should come by group two, I think.
Yeah.
So group two is, is a pay request for hundred and four, excuse me, third and partial request for hundred and four six thousand one ninety-eight seventy-eight, and the C D N I amount of fifteen thousand oh ninety-one fifty-two.
And those sites should be complete, is that correct?
Yes.
Should have been complete September ten, is that correct?
September ten.
And they are complete.
Yeah, but this is a partial payment.
I mean, I understand that, but sites are complete, that, that, that.
I believe so.
And what site should they?
That is Cemetery Road, site number ten, Churchill's Road, site number one, Old Highway, number two, sites two and three.
Same two P.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, so they're probably, they, they, they gotta be liquidated damages too.
They're not, they were tempted to start.
I know, that's why, it's a partial payment, not a bond.
So what we need?
He said he want a partial, Mr. President, he said he want a partial payment, how much is the partial payment?
A hundred and forty-six thousand one ninety-eight seventy-eight.
What's left?
That was my next question.
Uh, they are seventy-nine point five percent complete. There's still, uh.
Those guys, could you just, see, could they give half, we leave?
I don't know that we've ever done that, but they're.
Well, I don't know if they ever done what they done, they ain't doing it.
I agree.
So, we, we got to protect account, so we just can't pay them, and then they decide, say, well, you gotta keep that other thirty, forty thousand, we gone.
You're paying for the work they've already done. How, how much actual work's left, Robbie?
He just said they said we're not sent completely, they just moved it back up there, had they moved back up at Cranfield, right there, going to Cranfield.
I think so. Y'all, I apologize, Brant no longer works for J.K.S. and I've been throwing in the bag, so if I sound like I don't know a whole lot, I'm trying, I'm trying to get my hands on all this.
Cuz I know we had that meeting last week, it was in the same meeting when we were there, and.
There's bonds on these projects.
They were moving from that one side later, before we're back up to the other site, and we're gonna leave that site just with sixteen and finish doing some work on it. If they were gonna move up, or it would close both sections down of the road, uh, to deter traffic. And I was just wondering if they moved up to that other site, cuz I know that's a whole complete site, they just threw up and cleaned, they hadn't done anything, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, which ones are on Cranfield?
Eight-four, yeah.
Eight-four at Cranfield, they there.
Uh, at Cranfield?
Eight-four, old highway eighty-four, number three at Cranfield, they're right there right now.
I bet they just got there, they even thirded.
Supervisor Gray, there's bonds on their, there's construction bonds on their bid, and if they don't, they walk off the site.
I understand that part, but I thought I heard them say they was already liquidated damage. So.
It's still incomplete, the site.
We gonna agree to pay one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and they already pinned a liquidated damage, that's two hundred dollars a day?
At the, yeah, at some, at some point of their project, how much left is, is the liquidated damages exceeding the ten percent percentage? How they close? Yeah. As long as you, when you do your final close.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, since you're the legal man, what do you recommend?
What's that?
You know, and what do you recommend that we do?
Well, I mean, if it's within your contract, they pay it certain portions, which it is, and you still pay it, and if the liquidated damages has exceeded that percentage of paying, which it probably shouldn't, that two hundred dollars a day, you know, if it got where it's, you know, dipped like that, then you wouldn't pay them, cuz they would owe you money.
So, Mr. Attorney, your recommendation is that we pay them, right? Okay, let's pay them then.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Motion, my supervisor Gray, second, my supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
One more. Group Three E.W.P., Deerville Road, Providence Road, Kudzu Lane, Old Meadow Road, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand three fifty-four forty-nine, one three eight three five four forty-nine, and a C.E.I. amount of eleven thousand six twenty-three eighty-one. This project is about sixty-six and a half percent complete.
I'm looking at you, brother.
I'm visiting too. I ain't saying pay it, I'm visiting.
No.
Unless the percentage is complete, that's the question. That's one of the, you know, that's one of the liquidated damages since September fifth. Is the sixty-six percent complete?
Uh, not complete.
The sixty-six is complete. It's, it's a liquidated damage, it's that.
It's per project?
Yes. Per project?
No, not per site, but per project.
Per group.
Not per site, not per, sorry, group.
Group Three, if we can honor the day, just whatever the. But you say Group Three is sixty-six, sixty-six percent?
Yes.
Same, I didn't want to. You said they were seventy-seven percent, thirty-six basis.
Yeah, it's, it's, if they're that percentage is complete, then.
So, Mr. President, my question is to the engineer, you actually went out there yourself and put your eyes on it and you know for a fact that they were, you say they are.
I have, but Brant did, yes.
He don't work there no more, so he could've lied, he don't. I, I can't take it where a man is gone. He probably got five foot, 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 doing that guy, he's taking that back, he probably just left, so what, you see what I'm saying? I know. Can't take the word of a man that's gone. I, we need your word, that, that are where they say they are, where I can make a motion to pay them, cuz if I don't have your word, then I can't make that motion. You just pay them like that.
Very much. Does that, does that mean that Robbie, you and.
I tried to go by, I tried to go by most of the way, I know they having heck on that property site down there, that's one thing, well, on this one here, and they can't get a bar done, nothing to get the ripper app, all that, you know, what they're working on with.
Mr. President. I don't mean cut you off, but I like to pay people when they do their, their job, so I'm gonna make a motion that we pay them pending Mr. Dollar, and Mr. Cows go out and actually put their eye on the project and make sure they are where they say they are, and then everybody will be a win-win like that.
And that's, and that's probably good too, because it still has to be docketed, so if it comes back where I didn't do anything, we can reject it.
Motion, my supervisor Gray, second, my supervisor Hutch, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
That's all I have.
Can I put names?
Hang on a second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hey.
Yes.
On Morgantown Road, we looked at the vacant lot across the street on the radio, TV, Fair Shop. You know, why we couldn't go across the street, move the, move the road to the.
I'll have to go back and look at it, well, she brought it up, I did go on here, but.
Would you remember that, we asked about that, that project?
That's, that's the one that goes over by the apartment.
It's a, Brian, where the lead is.
Correct.
And the gully's next to it, the building's right next to it.
Right, that's the apartment, going out.
Just past the apartment.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, I mean. We basically tried to follow the alignment of the original Morgantown Road, tried doing it right away. But moving over in that gully would've increased cost pretty drastically, cuz that's a big hole.
Where those things are, was that more a drainage thing? That's not where the road's actually gonna be.
And, and I was gonna get more on.
The center line of the road, basically follow the center line of Morgantown Road.
And we're just be over there doing drainage stuff.
That's correct.
And there was several versions of Morgantown Road too, as the process went on. Original one had a third lane in it.
That's correct.
After the supervisor heard the complaints and saw where it would impact the yard, they reduced it, there wouldn't be a, a center lane. And then, on that particular site on fifty-seven Morgantown Road, it originally was getting a right-of-way, but after talking with the sister and whatnot, they actually reduced it to a temporary right-of-way completely, so there's not actually any right-of-way that's being taken for that position. So, that was again done after talking.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something? Okay, when it went from the original to the other, if you notice in these pictures, it showed twenty-two, it showed twenty-five. The deed work, the work wise is still the same, it hasn't changed. It hasn't any, nothing has changed from the prior taking to now, if you go that route. So, I mean.
What's changed is that there's not a permanent right-of-way on Morgantown Road. After we first met, and that, you know, I know you have your viewpoint or whatever from my viewpoint, we tried to accommodate as much as possible, your sister and, and your brother, you know, we tried to accommodate them to be least intrusive as possible.
So would it be better to get, try to go through eminent domain and take and shove every bit of it off?
Okay.
And how good?
You had a chance to stop. Okay, so I was talking, so I gave you a chance to.
I don't wanna talk and not do something, okay.
So, we went back and actually did note takings whatsoever, just a temporary to carve out for a court, and after the construction work is done, which is supposed to be two weeks over a two-year period, that's the only intrusion onto your sister's property. After that, the road doesn't encroach anymore on the property, that's what it's supposed to do.
I wanna end up getting trouble, I don't get on my own here.
But we did look, ask, how to ask that question, why we couldn't go across the street to the gully.
They, they answered that pretty well, that just costs so much more money to try to fill that gully in.
It's a mighty bill.
Not fill it in, but fill the parrot gate, basically, I guess, fill a wall.
And what our engineer at the time told us too, is when that road is complete, it should be quieter, it should be safer, it should be better on the drainage, you know, it should be, help them out, that's, you know, I really felt like we did a lot to try to work with those people, I, you know, and I understand their viewpoint and they're very concerned too, and I, I totally appreciate that, but from our perspective, we did try to reach out to them and, and work with them, and we did change our, our plans a couple of different times, and the ultimate plan was supposed to be a temporary right-of-way only, and again, that took special request from state aid at the time and so forth too. But I'm not, you know, again, from our one of you, our, our point of view, we tried to reach out and talk to them and be as least as intrusive as possible. Um, I don't, I understand you didn't feel that way or whatever, all right?
Well, let me say this, Scott, um, it was a lot of stuff going on with Morgantown Road. I, I, let me just read this before I go, cuz I, I, I found, the preacher said this in church, First Peter four, but the end of all things is at hand. So before the end get here, if I did anything, and if I said anything to upset anybody on Morgantown Road, I apologize, cuz I don't wanna leave here with that on my mind. Only thing I wanna do is get Morgantown Road done the right way. So if I said anything, or did anything to upset anybody, guess what? I'm man enough to apologize, I apologize, but Morgantown Road gonna be done, thank you.
Hey, my supervisor Gaines.
Hey, now, I, I have a question on, on what we had on State Park Road, cuz the last meeting, I think there was some gravel samples we was waiting on, and they had, the gravel might not have been good, whatever, were we, and.
I know, uh, our crew was out there restaking the curb gutter today. I know they, I, I did, Jim told me that last week about the gravel. I'm assuming he's already gotten it all out and getting it back in, but.
They have anticipated finish.
I'll give you a call second. Okay. With the contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Hi, I appreciate you letting me come and talk to you. I know it's on the docket today for a residence on Ratcliffe Road that we, the neighbors in that subdivision have been.
We have a notice, notice for ten Ratcliffe Road. If y'all wanna open the, for a, for a public hearing on Ratcliffe Road, a minutes property?
Motion, my supervisor Gray, second, my supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
So, that's my property.
Yes, sir, we'll, you'll have a chance to talk, yes, sir.
Hold on a second, all, all in favor? All opposed?
Just they need to state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Pace, and I live at twenty-eight Ratcliffe Road, Natchez, Mississippi. I've been a residence there for at least thirty, thirty or thirty-five years, and in the past ten years, this particular property that we're discussing has just gotten worse and worse and worse. Um, I have pictures that I brought with me that I'd love to have y'all pass around. The first one is showing a vehicle that is parked, pulled up and parked in the wrong lane of traffic, you know, sitting right in front of this property, and this is a constant thing, this is a, a dangerous thing, it's a, um, most of the time, there's somebody under working on it, and we're afraid that, you know, someone's gonna come up the hill and run right into the front of it. And then the second picture there is a picture of items that were just added out on the road, right on the roadside of that property, since y'all posted your sign. And I'd just like you to take a pitch, take a, a good look at all of those pictures and see what, what our, our neighborhood is looking like and what we have to deal with. We constantly have traffic in and out of our neighborhood, all hours of the day and night, coming to this property, only staying a few minutes, maybe ten minutes, maybe fifteen minutes, but not any time, time at all, and then they're gone. And they're racing up and down the road, and I just can't tell you, um, you know, all the problems that we've had. One of the pictures that I have there also shows, he has a humongous pile of tires. I don't know if you can see that in the picture, but that is also a hazardous thing, mosquito-wise and also fire-wise. I mean, we're talking about having ban, you know, bans from burns, but here we've got all this out there. And instead of trying to make it better, it's just constantly getting worse. He's got one whole section of his fence that is what I call Jeffrey Dahmer barrels. They look what, like what Jeffrey Dahmer kept his dead bodies in, and there's no chilling what is inside those, those big containers. And I'm just asking the board to have him clean up, clean up his place and narrow down his traffic, the people that are coming in and out and causing so much trouble in the neighborhood. There have been instances where we've had to call the sheriff time and time and time again. We have, and we've had people actually come onto our own property, and at one particular time, Mr. Delauter chased the fellow onto our property and was trying to tackle him down, and my husband stopped him, and he supposedly stolen something from his property. But, like I said, I, I would just like the board to review, um, maybe send somebody out there and get, get a good look at it and see, you know, what we're dealing with and, you know, what a, a blight it is on our neighborhood. Eventually, we would like to move, we would like to sell our property, and I don't see how we can, when we have an area that looks like that, just two, two, um, lots up from us. So, I just ask the board to, um, you know, take that into consideration and take into consideration, maybe check with the police, the sheriff's department, see how many times they've been called out there, you know, for one thing or another, and see if anything can be done about it. I appreciate you letting me talk, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything I can answer for you?
Oh. Just wanna ask the attorney, is there any covenants or restrictions all in account?
Oh, just a, I want to ask the attorney, is there any covenants or restrictions all in the county, okay? What about that? Covenants are, depend, depend purely on private landowners and their agreements and so forth. It would just really depend on each parcel and whether they have covenants or not, I can tell you. There are places with covenants, like both, for instance, has a bunch of covenants, uh, with the place over. Ashburn, yeah, yeah, your place, so yeah, there are, but those are between private landowners and they're enforced by private landowners. There aren't any, uh, there are obviously general ordinances, but we have not elected a comprehensive zoning, uh, plan like you see in the city. Um, so there's a lot of discretion in what you can do with your land in the county. And I think that's a reaction to, there are a lot of things you can't do with your land in the city, so you see that a lot. There is a stat, I'm sorry, supervisor. There is a general statute, so this is what's different between covenants of something just not looking nice or whatever versus, uh, what the county can do. They are limited, only work in what we can do within the statute. The statute says you can adjudicate that a partial land is in a condition to be a menace to the public health and safety. And the board supervisors may proceed to have land cleaned by cutting weeds, filling cisterns, removing rubbish, dilapidated fences outside toilets. Dilapidated buildings and other debris, training cisterns and standing water. So, we can do that if we find that it's a menace to the public health and safety of the community. Tires can be that issue when, just depending on your circumstances. Tires are breeding ground for mosquitoes, particularly with standing water in them, they get, they get caught up. And so, so that's awesome thing. If the cars are abandoned out there, they can, you know, that can be a danger to the, to the society of the community as a whole too as well. But just unsightlyness of parking your cars on the front lawn, I know some people do that and some people don't like that. Uh, that is, you know, that alone would be qualified, has to be, you know, more than just that.
Did you see the pictures?
I didn't.
Supervisor, yes.
It's up to y'all the discretion of looking at the pictures, is this a danger, this is rise of that level, it's helping say.
And I agree with Scott Tony, some of all the things that he have said that, cause the ordinance has been put in place and approved. And when he said about the cars and everything that's parked on the lawn, if they're not running abandoned cars, they have to be removed if they're not running. That's in the ordinance and also it gets a health issue, which definitely a health issue and stuff like that, that is in the ordinance. So, a lot of that stuff that Scott has talked about, about in that, uh, session, uh, all that is included.
Now, I will say this too, typically we start these proceeds off, I'm reaching out to the landowner and trying to talk to them. And I believe this is in supervisor Gaines's district.
Yeah.
I, I think that we, on this instance, you want to go ahead and put this down for a hearing, so.
Yeah, that's what we put it there.
Landowner is here, I seem to understand too.
Yeah.
Um, often these times we can work together and we most of the time don't have to. Clean them up. Cause I know we want a road crew working on roads as much as possible too, so. And most of the time we don't have to send a road crew up to do this.
Um, that's all I'm asking is that he clean it up and make it safe for the environment and safe for us in this neighborhood. I know he's got a trailer sitting there that's, um, just a small, you know, maybe a portable trailer. And someone is living in it, I don't know who, but it makes me wonder where is the sewage going? There's no, you know, there's no sewage hooked up to it, there's no septic tank or anything there. So, it's just a matter of safety and environmental danger and, you know, excessive traffic from his residents. You know, for whatever reason. And so, I just appreciate you letting me take the time to talk to you.
Yes, sir, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I didn't do that, I only offer.
I don't have any kind of ordinance in the county.
You need to stand, stand up if you want to talk, you need to go up, mic and.
You got it.
Name and address and anyone else in the public comment at this point.
Uh.
Your name and your address.
My name is John Delauter, live at ten Ratcliffe Road, here in Natchez. I've been presently, uh, living there for, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two years, that resident, right down the road. My mother's address, the whole of that, since I was ten years old. Uh, I never knew nothing about the ordinance or the conditions of a part of the property out in the county. I thought it was mine, I could do what I wanted with it, uh, most of the time, my person gets a lay-in out of town. Uh, I don't see why I can't have automobiles and stuff there that I, uh, work on, work with, trade, border, sell. Uh, I repair tires. Uh, people do stop in the road sometimes. This neighborhood has got probably ten or fifteen people that are motioning. There's probably eight cars come by my, by my house a day. That's just people leaving out for work, coming back in. Uh, some people ride in and out all day long, but there is three ways into my neighborhood. Uh, I got some people at my house right now cleaning it up. Uh, it does look kind of bad, but actually I didn't notice no water. All I need is a little bit more time and I have it cleaned up. I don't know if it'd be to her satisfactory, but I'm sure it'd be to everybody else's. Um. I don't know. I don't know what the ordinance is all, what the conditions are, what the regulations.
Could you, could you quote that, that section?
I understood that, sir.
He said he understood.
Yeah, if the board by resolution adjudicates, adjudicate such parcel of land, it's been conditioned to be a menace to the public health and safety of the community. That's the catchphrase.
What, what statute that is? I mean, he say he understood everything you were saying, I just want to know what the statute was. I used to have in my head, but for some reason my mind somewhere else.
I have to pull it every single time for, for reasons, it's like nineteen forty.
I mean, uh, to my knowledge, you partially right and you partially wrong. Because when it becomes a public nuisance and a menace to your neighbors, then, then that part becomes a problem for the whole neighborhood. And that's when we have to step in and, and, and do what we supposed to do. But, uh, one thing about the whole deal is you said you was gonna try to do it yourself.
Yes.
It's much cheaper for you to try to do it yourself, cause if the county come in and have to do it, then you're gonna have to pay for equipment. You're gonna have to pay for truck, you're gonna have to pay for all that. And we, uh, you, neither one can afford to do that, so it's the best thing you gotta do.
There's a fine on top of it for whatever the cost does, minimum of fifteen hundred dollars on top of the specific. And so, the county doesn't want to do it in such a way.
Yeah, well, that's, uh, yeah. Yeah, and it's a menace property and we have to do it so much every so often this, in, in, in every neighborhood. If it's a neighborhood that's, you got a menace property, people call and most of the time we try to allow the land on to clean them up. Because it is so high, because it's a steep fine and net. But yes, it's, I mean, you can look back at menace, it's something that we have done since I've been here, clean it up. Uh, had to clean up some properties, so you know, he trying to pull a law, so it's not signaling you out, but yes, it is. Uh, even though we own that property in that neighborhood, if you got some folks that need to clean up, if it's a menace according to that, it'd have to be cleaned up.
That statute is nineteen dash five dash one oh five.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I just wanted to point out that since y'all put the sign up telling him, telling Mr. Delauter about the meeting here. He has added quite an additional amount of trash and it's right on the, right on the road, right where you can see it. It's, it's a couch and a love seat and another chair and then a whole bunch of garbage piled on top of it. As well as some big sheets of glass that's jacked. And I just feel like he's not trying to make it better. We've, I've asked him over and over again and I'm just, I just question. You know, that that would be the outcome.
Oh, how much driveway we have over there?
Yes, hang on one second, go ahead.
Ma'am, the.
Hang on one second.
Oh, okay.
How much driveway?
Some of that stuff looks like on the edge of the road.
It was a long, it's a long foot, fifty foot, forty foot, like in that area there, you know, twenty foot center line, back and ditch.
Looks like some of that's on, on the right way.
Uh, I was told to put it out there that y'all had, had a big gravel truck that could come out and grab it, pick it up, put it.
The trash that she's talking about that's stacked up by the road, see?
That's what I understand.
I'm glad you said that, your address.
Have you been notified about that, Rob? Oh, it, just me, cause I've been by there before myself, you know? So, you know, if I was gonna have a place like that, I think I would probably put a fence up, privacy fence up for people don't have to look at that. Cause you are in the county, you have a right to have what you want on your property. However, it, it does look really bad and you did bring a big of property back to this town.
Yes, sir.
And I understand why they're angry, you know, aggravated about it.
It should've been hard, you know? That ain't a whole lot of work, I've been working from my home, that's where I, I don't draw the government benefits and Medicaid or whatever. I work for what I get, but I don't work, I don't eat, that's what I do with that stuff.
But the stuff that he's got stacked up.
I owe it all away.
I'm telling the law, seventeen Ratcliffe Road, Natchez, Mississippi.
We just have to have it for a minute.
Okay, the stuff that she's talking about that it's stacking out by the road, when the guy talked to him, he told him to start stacking it by the road. Then whenever he got it enough built up to call them and they would bring a trailer or that thing with the trailer with arm. And they would pick it up and haul it off for him. That was the guy that put out the notice, that's why he's stacking it out there by the road and where they can come and pick it up.
That car is going to strike down.
And you had a number to call office to pick it up? I mean, they, the guy works, drives at the end for horse hunting, you know, in our department.
Yes.
Uh, do you have the number? I mean, cause I didn't have any knowledge, you put that, nobody's out, get the office.
No, he needs, he needs the number, so.
Okay, I can give you.
But that's why he's stacking it out there is to get it all off.
I didn't have any knowledge of that, you know, y'all were putting anything out.
I have a, I have a.
Because he ain't got enough built up, he's gonna let it wash their trip coming, give it all in one time. Now, I don't know, but, uh, I'm not sure Bonnie come and ask John to do anything with this property. Because we was trying to figure out who reported it. And I mean, she would have done asked us several times that she, he would have knew who was reporting it. Now, she's complaining about cars being in the road, but not asking to clean this property.
Ms. President, uh, ma'am, uh, but I can tell you, she's not the only one, uh, reporting that property. I, I, since I've been in the office, I, I'll be honest with you, since I've been at office from day one. Uh, that's one of the things that they have been reporting, you have numerous of neighbors that call all the time about that property. So, she's not the only one that, uh, did it and she wasn't even the first person who reported, I, I can tell you that.
Okay, oh, I mean, it does look bad.
Yes.
But, and he does need to clean it up, I agree that one hundred percent. But, you know, I wanted it to come across of what's actually going on, that he is stacking that junk out there for the pickup. He, and he want to know how many vehicles is he allowed to keep? Because that's how he does do his, living, not hobby, but you work on other cars and stuff. And, uh, and then he does have a couple of vehicles he would like to keep that is personal to him. So, I mean, how many would he be able to keep? Is he allowed to put up a wood fence across the front of this property to close it off?
I bought from Centerline, does it have to be nothing?
I'll give the exact measurement for you, I give the engineer, see where our right of way is in that area, but more than, you know, like that's forty foot, but I would.
And he can't put up a privacy fence to block it all out?
Well, he's off the right of way.
She just cleaned it up.
Yeah, very, very few of these do we actually send the road department out to clean, even with the adjudications, we.
I'll ask a little bit more time.
Hang on one second, sir. We've had, even with adjudications, we worked with landowners to get them cleaned up, uh, not have to send a road crew out. And so, certainly then enforce prerogative to adjudicate it and then, you know, have their landowner start working on it and. Hate to put it on Robbie, typically he would make a report at the next meeting, this has been happening, this has not been happening or whatever and report back to us. So, that's certainly something that the board can do if it's, if it's the property board.
Yeah.
And like I said, at the next meeting, if I don't say a lot, I'm gonna tell them it's not a lot going on out there, you're not cleaning up or whatever. We had to holler a little off and then they're gonna go ahead or us to do it or whatever, and they might say that's when the next event is gonna come again.
Sheriff, you got something?
Yeah, I want to ask y'all how I put this off, because we have been out there several times and you know why we've been out there. And I know these people are, want to fade up with this, so I don't know how the hearing has to work, but I'm gonna ask y'all to go ahead and move forward so we can go out there and enforce it.
Well, we can certainly.
Wherever these be done.
We can certainly adjudicate, this, this board is making a decision of finding versus a menace for the public's sake and health and safety. And they can do that and then in order that the property be cleaned up, whether the road crew goes out there to do it or not, you know? Or waits to do it, if there's landowner doing it, that's still up to the road.
Do you need reports from us to help you out with this situation?
Ms. President, I mean, at the end of the day, you still gotta give him an opportunity to, to clean it up.
But they can't do it overnight.
You got to give him an opportunity to clean it up, that's what the law says, you got to notify him and get him an opportunity to clean it up.
Yeah.
If he don't clean it up, then no more notification, then we go out there and do it ourselves and charge it to his, to his debt. But you gotta give him notification of.
So, I think where we're at right now, we're gonna expect a report back from the law at our next meeting on the seventeenth. Uh, I think on behalf of, uh, Ms. Pace and other neighbors and, and y'all as well, this is comfortable for anybody, I don't think anybody wants to do this.
I mean, I'm his mother, I don't want.
At some point, you gotta draw the line, you have to. And, uh, so this time we're gonna pass a motion to pause here.
So.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Hutch, any discussion, all in favor, all opposed, I say, thank you.
So, it's got to show that he is actually cleaning up.
There has to be drastic improvement in two weeks.
You need to make, you need to make a motion to resolve adjudicating that it is a menace to the health and safety.
So, motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion, all in favor, all opposed, I say, thank you.
And I'll give it to, I'll give it to the sheriff as, as normal.
Okay.
All right, uh, we're gonna go back to, we jumped out there for a minute, we'll go back to departmental reports.
So, where can you throw it to?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you. Uh, y'all sit, big and broken.
Yeah, why don't you tie it? You know, why don't you tie it?
Sir.
No, we can't borrow.
Yes, sir, sir.
Let him know it.
Law.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Angel, I, you come show me something.
Ms. President, let him know about the tie, please, you can't borrow those tires. Uh, yes, sir, I know that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, very much so.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie Haley Humphreys, I am the assistant chief of Liberty Road Volunteer Fire Department. I am also the admin assistant of two Adams County Fire Service, which means I do all the fire reports for the county that gets turned into the state. Which helps us get our ratings down. All this we do completely pre-charge. All four county departments, not even gas money. All four county departments, not even gas money. And we try not to ask for much.
Sheriff. Sheriff, we pictured.
They say we're, we got people.
We understand budgets can be tight and get that. We have several county volunteers that went and got certified firefighter one. We have several that are certified driver-operators. We go to a lot of classes. Uh, me personally, I enjoy, Ms. Hutchins asked me to bring the truck out to her October fest. I love being out there and teaching the kids fire safety, letting them see the trucks, letting them, letting them know that it's okay if, if we come. Not to be scared of us. But this is what we have for gear. This was donated to us from Richmond. This is our gear. Had there been a fire in Liberty Road district Saturday, my truck was already out, I'd have been there first. How do I go in a burning building with this? And when I tell you this is some of the better looking, this is. You don't, and I hate to put it like, when I have to dress out for a kid to show them what, what the firefighters are gonna look like. When we come in, SCBA is on and the mask, it's a scary sight if you're a kid and you don't know. When I have to do that, I would like to have some decent gear. When I go to the fire academy, I am representing Adams County Fire Service, I am representing Liberty Road. You can tell I'm very proud of that. I am one or the only female, only female certified volunteer firefighter. Only female certified driver-operator. There are these, I'll tell you, I wish I wouldn't have gotten my position out, I got it. Because a lot of y'all know, I got it by my husband being murdered. So, instead of running away from the fire department, I stepped up. I'm fulfilling his dream. A flagpole, flagpole standing, waving a fly high by Liberty Road. Second thing, tanker truck. There's a tanker truck sitting in Liberty Road station, just waiting on the brakes to be fixed. And it'll be put in service, two thousand gallons of water coming. Because there's places in the county, we don't have hydrants, we can't even put hydrants. Cranfield Road to the county line, we cannot have a hydrant, there's no, no water lines to put a hydrant. City wants to say, oh, we do this, we do that, and they do, they come. I've also had people come to me and tell me, you know what I heard on the radio? What you hear? Because I'm not one, I'm not gonna sit on that radio. Tongue goes off, I'm going. Had a call last night, had an alarm call, had this or that. They told dispatch, hold off on paging the volunteers till we see what we got. That's not dispatch's fault, it's the city's telling them to do that. Now, I do know, Miss Annette has told them that the county called, paid them. Yes, they get the, the car extraction, we don't have the equipment for that. Are there several volunteers certified to do that? Yes. Books, I have books that's here too. And all, we, we need gear. I, I, I cannot go in a burning building and miss, I'm not safe. If that's your mom, your dad, your daughter, your son, would you not want me to go in and get them? Because I'll have to live with the fact that I couldn't after I had the training to do it. But I didn't have the equipment to do it.
Let me, let me ask you this question too, does it, first question. I was noticing your gear and I know Saturday you showed me some gear, I don't know if that's wonderful, that was all ripped?
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's it.
On the bottom?
On the inside?
Yeah, and can you, uh, listen to the bottom, showing the bottom of that group here?
This?
Here. And I noticed on it, it was gear that was donated to them from another.
From another department.
From another department. And that kind of touched me, when we had to have them getting gear from another department. And saying Adams County cannot provide them gear to fight fire. Um, my question was, and I know Superintendent Grace said this before too, some cannot go in and fight fires in, in homes, volunteers, can they?
We have, yes, we have several certified firefighters.
Most can go in and fight fires.
I am one, I believe we have seven or eight.
Yeah.
Seven or eight of us that are certified firefighter one and we're fixing to start an additional class for another group to go firefighter one. And those of us that have firefighter one are gonna go for volunteer firefighter two. So, we, we don't do this hazardly, we take the classes. I have fire academy classes, I have MEMA classes, because on top of all this, if Bree has to be out or Bree and Brad has to be out, I can work down at the U C also.
And any of those trainings that gets requested and approved, I don't think this board has ever sent notes of any training or certification or not. Also understanding that we applied for a grant on this fire equipment just recently too.
That's, that's not board.
That's, that's SCBA.
Well, that's just come before the board. The board has just enacted a policy about asking for increases of budgeted items and so forth, that we can get decided with the county administrator and a supervisor and profitable to the board in an orderly fashion too. So, we could probably address these type of things.
Let me, let me say this, because I know they did come, Darryl did come about firefighter gear. We discussed that, we talked about how much it would cost, he talked about the cost scenario thing. We said it was, I think, too much to purchase off our fire, you know, and that's what we got on the subject that's on again and cannot fight fire. But I think Angie and I talked about, and I think she made the suggestion, why don't you get the ones some gear? Half gear this time and maybe some next time. And maybe get some for the ones that are certified that can go in and fight those fires. And then maybe the next year, get some gear for, for ones that may come up certified or something like that. But to see them having to gift it gear donated from someone else and to look like that is embarrassing.
And it's better than what is embarrassing?
Originally had, we still have some of the old orangey red, like way past in the eighties gear.
I, I guess I'm a little confused, because I don't know the difference between the different gears of, of, I guess, maybe you can explain that because. When you say gear and you come in and you talk about gear, I remember.
Okay, this is called PPE.
Hang on one second.
The first time, uh, Dale, he did come to give it for, and he asked for eighty thousand dollars. And I told, I asked him a question, I'm just gonna be honest. Uh, he asked for the, the fire refund rebate money. And he asked to buy gears, we, I said, I did ask him, what did Joe say? Joe has always told me, no, we have to use that money to pay for the fires. So, I did tell him, well, if Joe told you no, why are you asking me? It came back again this year and he did the same thing and I gave him the same answer. That's what that money is allocated for. I don't know the difference between the gear, but I do remember when they come in, talk about it, I don't know the difference. I don't know what, and maybe somebody can explain it, but we did say when they asked for their money, he asked for the eighty thousand, I did say, well, perhaps we could buy some. There's a lot to come, to ask for at one time, not only at a time, eighty thousand, just a lot of money at one time. He said, he made the comment to me that he didn't want to give half of them, uh, gear and not the other half. But I told him, eventually everybody will have some gear, it's just it won't be at the same time. Because I know, he, I think he said they had like thirty volunteers and I know thirty of them not active, you know. And, but we did say, I, well, the board said, you know, we was gonna get back with it. And like I said, I don't know the difference, when he said it's a different kind than the, I don't know the difference, because I don't know anything about fire gear.
Let me explain, I think probably last year, I brought before the board, we had, they had got a measure for the PPE. It was like thirty-six thousand dollars, can y'all remember? And I said, let's go and get this because if not, it's gonna go up, we had a great deal, we got like seventeen, eighteen measure, the one that was.
I know we had twelve for sure.
Right. So, it was like thirty-six thousand dollars that we came and asked for, y'all said we couldn't do it. The, the money for the fire rebate cost, you said Joe did, don't make it right, like Scott said. Because that was Joe determining. Right, and, and I told him that before, because that's what the fire rebate money is. The fire rebate money that these, these ladies and gentlemen, they volunteer. Reason a lot of them don't respond because they have jobs. So, their job will not let them come and volunteer. But we came before the board and asked, we cut the numbers, we did the bare minimum of what the ones that responded because we tried it. Because you can't just say you get four gear, if that person get tired of it and can't respond, or they on their job, they can't go. Then that defeats the purpose. We just need to man up, stop letting the city dictate how we spend the money that comes to the county. And I say the same about it. We've checked with the state, counties can't use that, we're the only county in the state of Mississippi that does this. And we get laughed at every time we go to fire companies. Say, man, y'all are a fool. And, you know, it's bad when I go and have to represent this county because we're not taking out volunteers. You go to any other volunteer in this state and look at their volunteer fire department, that's what they depend on. Because you actually being a double deal, you sending them six hundred thousand dollars a year and they turn around charging you for every county call. That's the greatest deal since sliced bread, I would take that either.
And they can't put the fire out without the county truck, they don't have enough water. They don't have enough water. You, I go, most of the time I go during the day, during the week, it don't matter what district it is. Liberty Road truck was all the way at the port other day. Like my truck sits down, I'll cover it, I got it. Foster man down, I got it. Keystone gas, Billy got it. And I do my best to go.
And the brand that we got, that's for their second piece of equipment that goes with their uniform, is their breathing apparatus. You know, there's different levels of firefighter that they put on, you got your regular outside unit, you got your breathing apparatus. They can't hold their breath going and starting up smoke, I don't care how, how good you can't, even Navy SEALs, they don't even breathe that long, but that's what you asking our volunteers to do. Even we spend the time, we got these people certified to be able to do that. Because the more people you got certified, your, your, your fire insurance, your ready goes down into these districts. I live in the county, I want my fire insurance to go down. And, and I'm gonna do my best to make sure they got the right tools, the right training to do the job. If not, I will resign, because that's my job. Y'all owe me a county for making sure they trained and they're ready to go and I give it to them. They can tell you, in class, I push. And, and that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to, as a county home, to bring out the fire rating down, because it's, it's sad that, you know, both pray has a lower fire rating than anybody else.
Mayor. Y'all, I'm, I had. Brett, uh, one time before Darryl came before us and asked about something he wanted to pay for, and I asked him, did you try to get grants? He's like, no, it, it, you know, it's too much trouble or something, but we're gonna leave that, that alone now. Are there grants for, for, for these things?
Right, there are grants, but when we first, when we first put it, I saw it in twenty fourteen, they had put in that grant like two years, it takes probably about two years to get that grant. And when that grant got approved, it wasn't for everybody, it was for Kingston. Because one Kingston fire district rating is lower than any other district in the county, which I say that's wrong. So, that's what they looked at, they looked at fire calls and you look at your district, a fire district, there's a lot going to the grant. We only talking thirty-some thousand dollars. That's all we asking for the uniforms. You know, it, it, even though it ran down for the SCBA, we looking at a hundred some thousand dollars, that equipment is the cost of a fire truck, but they gotta have it. So, every year we put off, equipment going up. So, we just have to make a determination, if we gonna hold some money back to take care of our children, once we take care of them, they take care of them. But once we keep getting the ball down the road, you're still actually leaving ladies and gentlemen to do something for the county that benefits all of us.
I said this, President. I have a question.
Hang on one second.
You say you asking for how much?
Thirty.
Thirty-six thousand?
Yeah.
And we, 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 we're talking about thirty-six thousand. And we give out money, much more than thirty-six thousand or half of money thirty-six thousand. And we talking about lives here. Could be my life, your life, our kids' life, our mothers' life.
Their lives.
Their lives. I mean, thirty-six thousand is nothing compared to a life. It's nothing. And I'm gonna continue to watch him do what they do and they don't have to do, they volunteers, they don't have to do this. And to have to go to a meeting or certification and walk around in gear like that, that has been donated to them? I refuse to not sit here and vote or make a motion for them to have thirty-six thousand in gear. I'm not, I, we yes give it to county administrator, because that's what we say, to see if it's in the budget. But I would make a motion pending that those firefighters give gear the thirty-six thousand dollars. I'm making that motion pending, I'll check with the county administrator.
Motion by Superintendent Hutchins, gonna get a second. Second by Superintendent Wilson, any discussion?
What is the motion?
A motion to buy the fire gear for thirty-six thousand dollar pending conversations with county administrator.
For how many people?
Good question.
So, okay, is, how many would that cost, that thirty-six?
Probably answer there right now.
Right now, because that was the original point that we had.
Yeah.
And that was a year and a half ago, so, what, if you get it thirty-six, we'll make it happen. But like I said, they, they need your ASAP, this is, this is not, you know, we can make it work with that, we can kind of, we gotta get our people some gear.
Listen, Brett. But one volunteer firefighter, how much it costs for them to get everything they need, just one?
You, you looking at probably with SBA and gear boots and stuff, you looking at probably three thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Whoa, 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 whoa. To get all of their gear from head to toe costs three thousand dollars?
No, you, you, she's missing, she's missing gear, you got the SBA tanks and stuff like that, so that's probably right at, uh, about fourteen hundred dollars, a little, fifteen hundred dollars for that apparatus. Then you got your other gear that, uh, the PPE, that's different.
So, my question, my question is, from head to toe, how much it would cost to fully address? So my question, my question is, from head to toe, how much it would cost to fully address one volunteer?
As I said, probably, you look at it probably thirty-five hundred dollars average to dress them up.
The uniform and everything?
Yes.
That's team, that's not, so that's team.
We in discussion right now?
We are.
Um, there's a retired firefighter from, uh, Madison County. And I know he thinks he was a grant rider from Madison County. Couldn't, couldn't y'all get him to write some grants or try, try, try to ask for some money for other things? This is, we're gonna try to do this, but there's gonna be, that, that's not gonna cover very many of your people.
Right.
And so you need as many as you can get.
Right, even, let me explain how it works. E- even though you write a grant for rank and county, you gotta look at rank and county, it's better, it's different from Madison County.
Certainly, but.
Right, so even cause you write a grant, but we can guarantee, we have great grant riders that have written grants. Even we used, uh, Southwest, have written great grants and we got denied. So that's what I'm saying, it's not about the grant rider, it's about.
Well, sometimes it's about who you know.
One time we got denied because of our lack of the, you know, the, which is gonna be cured anyway.
Right, what I'm saying is, when you talk about grant, the more people you get certified to put in your grant, the more training they got that helps your opportunity. Before, we didn't have it, so that's what we're working on now, getting people certified, get them all this training, so we put that in the grant again, we got certified people. That'll give us a higher chance of getting the grant.
Well, it's the individual that's asking if he could help us.
Right, he, yeah, 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 Mike, yeah, he was.
But he is on leave right now, his wife had back surgery and then he's having surgery the middle of the month. But.
Not on his man, though, right?
Well, from what I understand, it's a double ankle replacement, so I'm pretty sure it's gonna be in a pretty good amount of pain.
Yes.
But yes, I will.
Well, I wish him, wish him all the luck with that, because I know that's gonna be a real.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir, uh, when are we going to, um, have a public hearing and decide, uh, what are we gonna do with the AARP money? Because I know, uh, you can take some of that money and replace some stuff in your budget to free up other murders to do other things with. So when are we gonna do that?
You can make a motion, when we get, complete with this motion, this set, this set of hearing. That's what we'll do.
All in favor? All opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Departmental reports.
You'll have one? How's everybody doing today? I'm gonna say this before I get started. At the end of the day, I love Adams County and I love the fact that we can talk, agree, disagree, and move on. So I wanna thank the board for everything I've heard this morning, not that you all need that from me. But I do wanna thank you all because a certain thing, it's a lot of stuff that was said here, especially hearing the difference in the tone when it comes to looking out for everybody in the county. So supervisors, I just want y'all to know, I appreciate you all, even everybody's concern, before I get started. Like, did we lose Miss King? All right, uh, first of all, I wanna apologize to Supervisor Hutchins. I didn't realize that I missed y'all totally.
Man, it was the greatest. I mean, people were so excited about getting back out.
Well, look, I hate that I missed it, but I had a really good reason to miss it, I'm fitting forward to that now. We had, recently we had several deputies at the sheriff's office, uh, just home two days ago. Supervisor, uh, not supervisor, but chief deputy, Billy Neill, uh, Billy Neill, he lost his mom. She passed away the same night the one of our deputies lost her fiance. And we had another jailer that lost her dad and Miss Jacqueline Posey lost her stepson the other day. So Saturday was full of funerals for, for everybody at Sheriff's Office. So I know there's a ton of events going around the community, but we couldn't make any of them because we were stretched out trying to make sure that we've been there and supported those who needed us.
And let me say this, I just wanted to thank you too for sending, uh, some of the deputies out for security, here and then, by the way.
Actually, like, I'm glad to hear that. The other thing I want you all to know is that our K nine was six years old and then five years, that means he only had maybe another year or two left that he could even function. His teeth had been grinded down, he was down on almost gums. And we didn't want, we didn't want our K nine to die in the back of a patrol car like some agencies do. So we retired our, we retired one of our K nines. So I want you all to know that as well. Um, it's, it's tough when you see those dollars going back in the car and it's just, that's just not the main thing to do. Just like we retired one of our, our years. You know, agencies should, if they don't, give them the K nines as well. I do have trash reports here. You know, let's see. Trash reports for the month of September. And it's gotta be a typo here. District one zero. District two, twenty-seven bags. District three, hundred thirty-four bags. District four, twenty-nine bags. District five, seventeen bags. I'm gonna attribute that district one to the fact that it was raining, maybe, oh, I said September, though, didn't I? Sorry, I don't, I don't know what that.
Shit, I know what happened.
What happened to you?
Supervisor Wilson picked all that trash up and do it, and threw it at District three.
I don't see how he got past that.
In what district?
District three.
I will say this, I had, I had a man ask me, said, what are y'all gonna do about all this trash? And said, you know what we're gonna do, we're gonna close every fast food joint. That's how it solved the problem, that people won't go through drive-throughs. And he didn't throw it out of their cars because if they haven't been trained any better, then, you know, take it home or throw it in a gas station or wherever.
You pick a street up and it's dirty, it's.
I guess they're tired of picking up trash, but I don't know how that happened.
I do it, well, every time I walk, so. Uh, next thing I know, Supervisor Gaines, you've been asking about Project Nova update on cameras.
Yeah.
The first cameras are set to be installed October tenth. Uh, whole camera's gonna be the first thing go up and then everything else is gonna start going up right behind it. But they're on schedule, we talked to them this morning before we came here, because we knew you was going on to update.
Yes, I knew.
I passed out folders for all of you all, uh, turning Scott's over, he's already seen this before. This is the National Institute of Corrections, um, and I don't wanna go too far in detail, I'll let y'all look at it on your own, because there's a lot to explain, I don't wanna take all the time along it. But I'll email you all that too. But they're gonna come down and they're gonna do quite a few analyzations and assessments in regards to trying to help us with the GL situation. This is probably about a fifty-some thousand dollar, um, assessment that's gonna be done for free. It's not gonna cost the county anything, it's not gonna cost me and being at Sheriff's Office. But one of the things on there, they're gonna want to talk to the supervisors and interview you all too. It could be by phone, or it could be in person. And they have Jake finally given us tentative dates on this. And the tentative dates is gonna be October the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. I don't know how that works for you all scheduling, that's why I say you all can call. But at the end of this analyzation process, they're gonna set up a town hall and actually do a town hall. And I need to get with the convention center, possibly at the convention center, to the status of the GL. What can be done to fix it, what kind of law bills and why citizens should buy into having the the county deal that meets qualifications and standards of American Disabilities Act and other acts that are out there concerning GLs. So I gave you all that packet so you can take time to look over your own. And Scott, you've already seen it, but if you want this or you or Miss King want, you all are up to it as well. I did, I sent it a while back, but I decided to print it out. Yeah, I've talked about it here too, but they actually gave us dates and so I wanted to get that to people as soon as I could. The eighteenth through the twentieth is tentative for now, but we're gonna make sure we can get that reconfirmed though. And again, they're not coming to hurt, they're coming to try to help us with what's going on up there. And it talks about financing and everything, you know, different types of financing and how you're gonna approach different aspects of it. October the twenty-eighth, for your calendars, if all, any of you all choose to, we have some people coming to town to do a legislative update and reference to new criminal laws and other laws that are on the books. That's something that we always try to get somebody to come in and do for us at Sheriff's Office. Because once those laws are passed, we don't wanna fall through cracks and, and make, uh, we wanna make sure we enforcing was legal to be enforced. But if you all want to, it's October the twenty-eighth at the safe room, if you all wanna join.
What times?
Uh, eighth, it's from, it's from eighth that morning to twelve, uh, to twelve. It's supposed to be a four-hour block, that we got some speakers coming in to speak on this legislative update. The other thing that we have, one too, is the Citizens Academy. We're gonna start off our Citizens Academy October sixth through December the tenth. That's gonna be, uh, in the evening time from six to eight, every Tuesday from, uh, October sixth through December the tenth. So if you all know anybody who wants to participate, you know, even if any of you all wanted to, you all can see what goes on on the other side of the fence. We take them through almost every aspect of law enforcement so people can get an idea of why we do what we do, how we do it, why we do certain things. And, you know, and what has happened over the last couple of Citizens Academies that we've had is those citizens got a different, uh, relevance for law enforcement. And they've actually applied and became deputies since then. We have a couple of people at Sheriff's Office working right now that went through our Citizens Academy and said, said that they want to serve after that.
What's the date? Excuse me, Sheriff, what's the date?
October the sixth through December the tenth, and like I said, it's gonna be in the evening times from six to just two hours a day. Uh, in the evening times from six to eight. Um, let's see here. Other thing I wanted to bring up was Enterprise, Enterprise cars. And I don't know if this is legal or not, but they, they brought it up and they did a presentation with myself and Chiqui and some others, uh, from the county. And it's a reference to the cars that we actually own, that, they brought up asking if the county was willing to let them sell our used cars that we own versus them selling our series. And they did this analysis and, and broke down the ones that they suggested that we get rid of. And their number again up there, like if we sold them at the time we're supposed to sell them, it'd end up being like two hundred and seventy thousand that they could possibly get for those cars. That can go back into the general funds to purchase new cars. I told them that they need, definitely need to get Miss King online and, and some of the supervisors as well. Because I don't want to try to explain it, yes, and Scott's over too.
Yeah, that's.
And Scott. But I wanted them to explain it to you all like they explain it to us. But one thing that'll have to be done is to see if it's legal. We're not talking about the lease car, we're talking about the ones that's, that we already own that's on our list. They're saying they get way more for them than we can. And that money can be put back towards, uh, the leasing of other vehicles or whatever, so just wanted you all to know that. I do have two things that I, I need board approval for. We are moving a couple of vehicles around and I need the board to approve the unmarking of one of the vehicles that's already coming, a twenty, twenty-two dollars Ram. And one that we already have, it's been reassigned. And so it's a two, two thousand eighteen dollars Ram. Uh, I do have, I'll give the, I'll give the, uh, VIN numbers to Miss King here, so she can scan it for the wreck.
Yeah, I'll give it to her.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. The last things I have, the last things I have is, had a couple of people leave. I had one of the jailers leave, Daven Urban, and I'll give this to you too, Miss King.
Hang on one second, Chair. I think we need a motion spread this across the minutes. Uh, this is a twenty twenty-two dollars Ram. It's gonna be reassigned, well, the two thousand eighteen's gonna be reassigned. And, uh, twenty twenty-two dollars Ram's gonna be unmarked. A motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
They know we drive anyway.
All right, Chair.
All right. Um, had, had a couple of people, uh, leave since the last time we talked. Daven Urban, he was in the jail, and I passed this on to you two as well, Administrator King. He was a jailer, I had one of my sergeants leave, Sergeant Thomas McGinty. He's got out of law enforcement and one of my deputies leave, McKenzie Taylor. And so I'll pass this to you, so you can make sure there you need to be updated, it's updated. Okay. Reason why I brought that up is because you all passed a motion, made a motion earlier that when we talk about certain things that we need to do in private. I am gonna ask for a meeting in private, uh, not in private, but outside a board meeting in reference to these next three people, David Nations, DeSav, Davis and Karen Ewing. And the reason why is because, you know, we eliminated that vocal position and I put that on Karen Ewing, uh, workload. She was already our sex offender registered. And now she's doing the job of two people by herself and I did come here today and I was gonna ask for her. Her and these other two people here raised, I'm just telling you why. And it's because her workload has increased. DeSav Davis, he's been running, he's been running one of my shifts for a couple of months now. Um, and he has been moved up to sergeant, but of course he's not getting paid for it because I was waiting on this budget for you to come in. That was one of the things I requested. But I'm just telling you all how the plan on plan for it is, one of my sergeants gone, so that, that left that spot. He's gone now. And the other person was David Nations, uh, so if I can meet with Supervisor King, I mean, uh, one of you supervisors and Administrator Angel King about that, I'd love to have that conversation. It's solemn, I suppose, so.
The conversation came up, uh, excuse me, Mr. President. I think you emailed about it, so I mean, I think everybody in here is aware of that situation already.
I think you are too, because.
You are, you already, you emailed it, what, two weeks ago? Yeah.
And here are the, here are the numbers right here for everybody. Uh, I did email and then I sent it over to you, so I don't know if y'all need this or not, to look at it or no.
They, I thought they approved it.
We didn't approve it, he didn't approve, so we killed it. It never get approved, we didn't have to vote on it, she never brought it up, when we got the time for that, uh, because the other, he wasn't here.
Okay, but I am gonna say one thing. We can't use, uh, the, not replacing that oh fifty as justification because that was pretty universal. But I do, in my opinion, agree that, that those three need to.
I actually had wrote it in the budget anyway, but I don't, I, truth be told, I hadn't seen the new budget yet because I know it came through this morning. And, uh, they made me aware of it when I was coming over, and that's why I said, we need to talk, I don't have a problem with that, but I did send it in and do it.
I think we was on there, so if it's okay, I'll make a motion that we move it to the, that's the effect.
Let me ask a question to, uh, President. You say you had already wrote it in?
Yeah, I had, I had wrote it in, but you know, we was waiting for everything to be approved. But I can't say, because I haven't seen the budget.
Yeah, the motion.
She said wait, she said wait.
Who's up there?
Well, I'm, I'm, this you brought me.
Those are the ones that resigned.
All three?
Yeah, those, what do you have in your hand?
Do you have letters?
Yeah, I have the letters, but I was just giving that to, uh.
I got it in the email.
Yeah, she got it too, but I wanted to, you know, y'all wanna know, so I wanted y'all to know. They are no longer here, none of those people on that list, they gone. They're gone. All three of those people are gone.
So do we have to spread these across the minutes, Scott?
Nah, I would not.
Your resignations.
You got a resignation letter?
No, I was just, uh, I was just bringing that for county administrators for payroll purposes. Yes, I didn't know you had it, so I just brought that with me, so.
Yes, but, uh, I'll go back, I was finna make a motion that, uh, these other three uh, employees, Miss Karen Ewing, David Nations, DeSav Davis, that we moved them to the sheriff's recommended, uh, case scale.
That's a motion?
Yes, a motion by Supervisor Gaines, give me your second. Second by Supervisor Hutchins. I do have paperwork here in front of me, pay rate change, David Nations to twenty-two oh five an hour. Karen Ewing seventeen ninety an hour and DeSav Davis to nineteen eighty-eight an hour, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
And, and there is because they changed positions, right?
Yes, and, and I'm gonna tell you with Davis, he, we're having to do so much with. Yes, and, and, and I'm going to tell you with Davis, he, we're having to do so much with the FBI now with Ninbers to be Ninbers compliant. That, that in itself is, is on a whole other level of what we're having to deal with at sheriff's office. And truth be told, most agencies have a, a Ninbers person already in place for that position because it's, it's just a tedious of a task. When they have to go through every single report and it's certain coding that the FBI have versus what the states have that has to be inputted and you got to be in compliance. You got to learn this new system. When I tell you it's a whole different world, y'all ever stopped through and just seen what we're having to do because of the new reform efforts that have been put in place? But he's taking it off, so.
All in favor?
Whoa, 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 whoa. I've got a question. And this tip, the county administrator. What the sheriff is proposing to us today, is, is, is that part of his budget or is this something new to his budget? That's what I need to know.
It's, it's, it's not going to change the budget.
Okay.
But it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect the budget either.
This I want to know.
All in favor? All opposed? I'd say.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Sheriff. Any more departmental?
Sheriff, do you have any idea of what period they're installing the project note came?
I can get them to y'all, you know, I, I can get, I can get them to you. I can do the second word.
Okay, okay, okay.
I can definitely get it to you.
Okay, okay.
I gotta hold this up.
Any more departmental reports? Is anybody online?
Well, he was, but he off now.
Who?
Charles was online, but he off now.
Come with the table, supervisor Gray.
That's him, uh, that's the chair. And boy, I'm going to say this again and, uh, I don't want to keep just bringing Martin Town Road up, but everywhere I go, uh, keep, keep saying things in their mind. That Martin Town Road is not going to get done. And we are as close as we ever been to breaking ground on Martin Town Road. We just got, got a couple of hours and crossed a couple of T's. But, uh, make sure you take care of your business, whoever you need to take care of with. Uh, I want to congratulate the Natchez Allen County, Natchez Allen School District on the B rating that they received. They went from a D to a B. And I think, uh, that is great not only for the school district, but for the community as well. Uh, that's a win-win for the whole county. Uh, we need to make a decision on, uh, I know that the cities say they waiting on us with this E nine one one, what we going to do and what they going to do or whatever the game may be. But we still need to make a decision on, are we going to continue to house their inmates in our jails? Need to make a decision, uh, the decision already been made, I don't know nothing about, I don't know. Uh, and Scott, you say we need to make a motion? I, I, I just don't want to sit here and make a motion about setting up a hearing for AARP money. And I don't know whether the other board members could be there, so I'm just going to tell, call that, contact everybody and find out when they're available. And then we need to have a public hearing, uh, because when you stepped out, I'd say we, we can, uh, use some of that money for our budget to free up some more money to do some other things that we need to do. Just, uh, and let me say something about the budget. Uh, we're going to have to follow our budget process when it comes to this money. And June, July and August is, is, is enough time for everybody to plan for what they want. And if this board is going to do it, they need to do it. If they're not going to do it, they need to vote it down. But we cannot continue to have people coming in after we done decided what the budget going to be and, and saying they need X, Y, Z. That's when the budget get messed up at the end. We can't do that. Uh, I made a comment earlier about the, uh, two point eight, I mean, the one point eight million dollars that we got out there. This is what I would like to see happen. Once we recruit that money, then, uh, I think we will have enough money to, to give our, uh, employees another raise. And, uh, without breaking the county because we do have money and they need it because everything in America has went up. And I just think employees need a living wage, salary, not a minimum wage, salary, I always say that. Uh, I'm going to say this and I'm going to have one, but this is just, you got long because we didn't have. My sympathy goes out to my good friend, Ms. Dennis, ninety-four years old and passed. She was the only one to come up to my car wash when I got five cars to wash. And she asked me, what time can I get my car washed? And I'm looking at all these cars. And she said, huh? I said, Ms. Dennis, I'm finna stop right now and get on you and wash your car. She passed. And my sympathy goes out to the Dennis Moore, the Hughes. I've been knowing Ms. Casey for a long time, the Oste, the Woods family, the Granger family, the Jones family, Matthews family, the Harden family, the Sims family, the Smith family, the Hall family, the Dillon Port family, the Woods again. And, uh, the guy that got killed on a motorbike, uh, I think it was Friday or Saturday night, uh, Givens, uh, Gibson, George Gibson. And the guy that got shot and killed, Coleman family. Okay, uh, the Hawkins and the Berry family. And, uh, no, my good friend, Frank Spang, he lost his mother-in-law.
Yeah.
His mother-in-law. And my sympathy goes out to them. And, uh, my prayer goes out to the, the crossing guard that got hit in front of, uh, McLauren School. And one of our employees, uh, our IT director, uh, he really need all our prayers too. So really, really pray for him. And, uh, this supervisor Wilson. We living in a world now, man. I guess it's because of seeing the love of people have grown wax coat. People just don't love people like they used to. And they always told me love will cure all things. So we need to get back in the business of loving each other like we supposed to. And if I could be excused, I'm going to go try to catch at least fifteen minutes or twenty minutes of this funeral right down the street. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Hutchins.
Uh, yes. I'm, uh, getting that right on what supervisor said, two over one point million, I mean, one point eight million dollars. If we recoup that money, I would like to see also employees get raises because we are losing great employees at this time. And also as Robbie said, we had, there was a job fair and they couldn't even get nobody signed up because of what we are paying. And we are at the bottom total, you know, with other counties. So I'd like to see that happen also for, uh, employees with that one point eight million dollars. Uh, another thing else, Robbie, I like, uh, I got a call about, uh, you know, between Lotus and Greenfield. That's where the bus stop to pick up kids. They need like a warning sign that there's a bus stop there. If we can get a bus stop sign there or something like that, can, is that possible?
Heard we come out for the, for the, on Greenfield there?
Right. Oh, where? I think it's where, you know, like coming up off of Lotus, right there in Greenfield. You're coming on to Greenfield. Yeah, right there, I think the kids have to come up to that, uh, stop sign there.
I'll check, see if it's legal.
Okay, yeah, check and see if that's legal, uh, if we can get something there. And, um, also, did you take care of that at ten thirty-one Lotus for Ms. Brown? That was taken care of? Okay, great. Um, what needs to be approved?
I'm surprised.
Oh, okay. Right. I think, um, that was all I had because I took care of the striking and the grant for Deerfield. But I do want to say also, I'm going to send out, uh, my prayers to, uh, our employee, Mr. Brandon, John, I mean, uh, Brandon Gordon. Uh, I would keep them in our prayers because like I say, supervisor say this definitely needs, we just need to bring our prayers. And that's all I have.
Okay, I didn't really have much. I just, oh, supervisor Gray keeps, um, wanting us to have a meeting about the CARES Act money. And, and I'm going to propose this board, not now, but sooner or later we're going to have to do it. Um, we proceed, I guess we got five million dollars.
Five million. Six. Five point eight million.
The county has a lot of debt that is, uh, being created over years and years of, um, I'm making people mad here, misspending. I'm saying, uh, or just not realizing. The money the county takes in is, is the taxpayers' money. We're, we're supposed to take care of that. And, um, we've got a, uh, kind of a land yap here with the, uh, the CARES Act money that we could take, pay down five or six million dollars in the county debt. Um, at a rate about a four point two five percent interest. Um, that comes to like five hundred and eighty-two dollars a day we're throwing in the trash, just in interest alone. Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a month. If we were to pay that money down on some of this debt, some of the, some of the interest rates are different. They might be higher than that, I don't really know. Um, but we'd be saving seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a month in just interest that we're throwing away. And we'd also be saving the money we pay on, be paying on debt service. And it would free up a lot of money in the county. If we just let people come in here and nickel and dime us out of all that money, we will have nothing to show for it. And this might be the first board in a long, long time, maybe ever, there's actually knocked down the county debt considerably. Where we'll have more leeway and we can pay our employees a little bit more money and we can add more services to the county. And that's what I have to say today.
Supervisor Daniels.
Well, that first time I was saying that all my prayers, it simply goes out to all the, uh, Bere families and special prayer goes up for, uh, our IT Brandon Gordon and his family. And, uh, you know, that's, it's about fulfilling itself in these days that you'll have sickness and like you said, brother love, white cold, nation against nation, father against son, mother against daughter. But that's one of the reasons why I try to put playing stuff in place that we can communicate. You know, you hear me saying this since I've been here, communicate, communicate, communicate. If we can just sit down at the table and have these conversations and I think they need to go, uh, overall well. And overall, I think we as a board have did a good job of making good decisions and, uh, even now they're on their heat up there. And it's good for other people to have idea. Uh, it ain't good for every time something come up, we all have, uh, five, the, uh, all five voters. Cause I know all, we, we got five different supervisors here and all of them got different minds. So that don't mean that we falling out, but that mean just communicating. And like the policies I think that we put in place today, if we pay out our county money paying paper for working, I think they should do the necessary paperwork to make sure we get reimbursed. You know, and I do think this, I want, uh, this is kind of the last thing I'll say, I want to ask for all our department head and, and, and us as supervisors too. Uh, our administrator runs the county book and that don't mean it's, administrator is not a supervisor. We make the last vote, but it, I think it will help us to be knowledgeable enough to meet when we go to spending money. Have a meet, uh, our department, that one. If you're going to come in here like today, we will save probably thirty minutes, accent portion. Have a meeting with the, uh, administrator so we can see if we able to do it or if we not. And then see what we need to put in place to do it, even though it stop with us. And that's why some of the times I will ask us, I'll try and make it my business. If a department want to meet, maybe we can, uh, have a supervisor come up there and, uh, kind of meet with them. And that way, when it comes to the table, somebody at the table will be meeting with, uh, a year of floor, Mr. President.
I've just had one item. Uh, we received the, uh, five correspondence from Bridgers on our twenty one audit. We just need to have authorization, uh, for the president and the county administrator to sign off on it and spread it across the.
You heard the request.
Second.
Motion, supervisor Wilson, second, supervisor Daniels, any discussion?
Yes. Are we going to have an exit audit? Like we used to have exit audits on these audits?
And you want me to see if Mr. Bridger will come and speak with the board?
He's actually offered to do that.
Yeah.
If y'all want him to.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, we just do the exit audit.
If, it might be one of those where we get him on a twenty-one that's coming up for the end of the year, but if you want it, because it's so remote.
Right.
That twenty-ones will be real helpful.
And he did offer, you know, word, he didn't want him to come.
We said, we want you to get our rights out.
Yes, thank you. That's all.
Just slow. Oh, wait, when you, all in favor? All opposed? How's that?
Couple of different things. We've got another missed property on the one twenty-two Otis ready, drives. That was advertised today.
It's there, and I, and I don't know what happened with this property. Uh, somebody went to cut the grass out there, but they said the grass is too tall, they weren't going to put the zero turn in it. That's what one of the neighbors, so, so I don't know who, uh, who it was. You don't know, I didn't know who it was and they didn't know, they just said it's a white guy trying to cut the grass. And he was, I don't know, going to load the zero turn, he walked in the front and back, he said, nah, he ain't going to put a zero turn. So I kind of figured, I don't know who the property belonged to. And, uh, so somebody the way of it.
Do you want to continue on with the hearings or?
Yeah, we, we going to go ahead and let Dan tell it. I mean, I thought you might have contacted the folks.
To my knowledge, I haven't. Now, they may have contacted Corbett or they may talk, contacted Sam who works for me and who would have told them to steal. Typically, I talk to them when they contact.
Yeah, because.
Time or whatever.
And I figure that somebody had been contacted because they said somebody took it. But we need to steal on fault because I, I, I forgot the communication.
You looking for a motion?
Yeah, so any motion, you have a.
Motion, supervisor Daniels, second, supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
That's the motive for here. Yeah, you just open the floor for public comments. If there's no one here on it, then supervisor Gaines can, uh, explain what's going on with property and the board can close the hearing now.
I mean, just, uh, it's a house that now go for real to bother. Uh, it's just got a lot of grass, the grass is extensive, it's not junk or something like that, the grass just need to.
Like a lot of grass cut?
It just need a grass cut.
Is it tall enough where?
You need a track.
To the health and safety of other people?
Well, it's, it's snakes, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Anyone else for one twenty-two Otis ready? All right, we can close and to do the motion, close.
Motion, supervisor Daniels, second, supervisor Wilson, all in favor? All opposed?
Uh, I had an email from Judge Sanders. She also wants to engage helping hands for counseling services. Uh, she said she could make it to another meeting, she just couldn't make it to this particular meeting. Um, I thought I would present it to the board if, if it's a reversible grant, that's the same gap sort of, that'd be, that'd be that. It's prerogative of the board.
Motion, supervisor Hutchins, second, supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? How's that?
Uh, Alan emailed us requesting a, an extension on the Delta Energy grant that we had, the rail grant. They have not reached their job count that they need to make yet. And so he's asking for an extension. He also, uh, well, if we don't get the, ask for the extension, then we have to start repaying the grant and seeking it back from Delta Energy. So obviously a prerogative needs to be to ask for the extension.
You heard it, so. Motion, supervisor Wilson, second, supervisor Hutchins, all in favor? All opposed? How's that?
Uh, and we're, we'll talk with MDA. Uh and we'll talk with MDA and Delta about uh would it allow that threshold, the ninety one job threshold go reduced to whatever their actual job count is. And I can remember it was only six three last time we were doing there. And uh on Morgantown Road, we did talk with Randy Dickerson, first talked with Lee Fredericks. He really helpful, excitable, gave me lots of contacts from people. Uh Randy Dickerson did say to open that out with MDOT, there were a couple of things that needed to do. One of them is we need to send a notification on the county's letterhead uh naming the president as the local project agency personnel, certain information on for. But also, we have to name a local project director. And we have two employees that, correct me if I'm wrong, have been trained to be that person. One of them would be Robbie, the other one's Meg. So you would put one of them as the uh personnel. They would need to also provide us with their certificate of uh training that they've had. Robbie, you know, are you the one for for a road or your road?
I thought so, something, I don't know. We got Ms. King certified to.
What's that?
Ms. King certified to fifty certified. But anyhow, we move forward with it, do whatever.
Don't want to draw a straw before?
No, me and Meg can take one of them here.
Well, who do we need? We need to send out somebody. That's that's the. He did not say Ms. King. That's why I didn't want to pick it on you. It's just with Ms. King.
It's a tragedy, but I think she got her plate full too.
Huh?
Yeah, that's the best of the wolves. I can breathe now.
So again, motion to do all that, probably also have that a resolution for it that I'll try and get done.
All right, well. You heard the question. Return the motion, Supervisor Gaines.
Robbie, you gonna accept it?
Second, Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
And I don't think we got a full docket. I want to talk for you, so that I'm not wrong. I don't think we've got a full docket on today. Um we might need to have another meeting just to prove a docket if there's any immediate expend expenditures part later on in the week. So there's things that can't wait. We don't want anything getting cut off or or whatever.
I want to say, I do want to say. Uh uh but I want to say something for the meeting that y'all setting up. Y'all do emergency meeting. I really would appreciate if y'all do the emergency meeting on what you got. Don't wait till the emergency meeting and put four more things or five more things on because it make sure we gotta get back. We gonna come and make sure the county run. But other than that, I appreciate if y'all letting everything stay on the meeting until the ready meeting day. That's all I have to say. I hear you.
I totally agree with that.
Let me let me ask a question also on that too. Another docket for this coming up. This is something we're gonna be using.
Till next week, we have to cut all expenses to roll over the new year. I told them first, so that means something something other things to be paid because of the roll up.
The way the way your accounting system works is you would set things that would look like they were spent last fiscal year, but technically were spent the next fiscal year. It'd mess her up for our cash balances. So we said, let's cut it off for the last week. That's why on that emergency meeting, you actually had a docket as well. It needed to be done. It wasn't just something we added so that we could make bills were paid and not impact our our cash balances. That thought was done the way it was done. And hopefully we won't have that at a meeting, but if you do, it's to local vendors and then anyone else that might cut us off if we don't pay them, uh we get that paid. I just just net one. And no, I do not add anything unless it's necessary. And I ask the same thing. Do we have to have it in some reason?
Don't be quiet.
What did you what did you say about resolution?
For the the indon or the, yeah, that's all included in that pass. We'll be able to prove this stuff that we had to enter.
I only have one thing. Uh the the budget for the fiscal year two and three is available to all departments. I guess I'm gonna say this because I guess I'm labeled as being cheap, but I'm not being cheap. When you prepare a budget, it is based upon expected revenue. That means there's a budget out of here. We haven't received it in money to take care of it. So I'm asking all departments, please do not just go out and just spend money because it's in your budget. Because if something happened on this end for expected revenue that we don't get, then I have to find out how am I going to make up for this? So it's not being cheap, it's being real cautious just in case something go wrong. And it can happen.
Send out a uh email to all departments?
No, no. And another request, I'm requesting that all departments try to hold up as much as they can on their spending because at the end of the year, our tax settlement is not that much. And so they're trying to make it to the end of the year. And I know there are things that has we have to get, but just refrain from getting anything outside was not necessary. And that's all I have.
All right, did you go?
Yeah, I want to add, I was gonna say, you know, one thing, because these are uncertain times. Nobody knows what's coming in. County's gone crazy. Um the Netco deal, is it? When will that close?
They have not set up a precise closing date. I tried to get it closed at the end of last week. I've sent over a proposed D D special warranty D to them. They're supposed to review it and get back to me. I thought they would get that to me by the end of last week. They have approved of the pricing that we had, which was, yeah, everything we asked for. It's fifteen thousand unpaid option plus instead of thirty acres, it's thirty point six five. So we wanted that seventeen eighteen thousand dollars in additional pay. I just for that appear to think they didn't object to it. So I look for it right then soon. I was again was really hoping that we could get it last week. Angie was wanting us to get it there too.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to update because I knew we were kind of needing that to just help us make it through.
The year.
Yeah, thank you.
I need more approval to sign a contract agreement for Martin Kemp to do the uh drug testing for the Havis County Youth Drug Court. This will be, this agreement will begin October third and shall terminate June thirty of twenty twenty-three. Motion Supervisor Dan, second, Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, next I have about a half a dozen uh reimbursements for Angela James. Um all of these have been signed by Judge Brown. Um first one is two hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents to Meridian, thirty dollars and sixty-three cents to Fayette, fourteen dollars and fifty cents to Vadaugus slash Faraday. You need dates on this?
No.
Sixty-six twenty-five to Evet County, eighty-one twenty-five to Summit, Mississippi, ninety-four twenty-five to Nagoya, Mississippi, and forty-five seventy-five to Louisville, Mississippi. Motion Supervisor Gaines, can you say? Want to want you adding them up? Two thirty-nine sixty-three. Thirty sixty-two. Fourteen fifty.
Two thirty-nine sixty-three. Maybe what's the next one?
Thirty sixty-three. Fourteen fifty. Sixty-six twenty-five. Eighty-one twenty-five. Ninety-four twenty-five. Forty-five seventy-five.
Sixty?
Six fifty.
Oh, seven seven six.
I made both. You all get a second?
Say, Supervisor Wilson, say. All in favor? All opposed? As a.
Again, you keep monitoring the.
Yeah.
We need to go back to this. Check my.
That's all I say?
No, I've talked to you.
No, it's just a delay. Uh next is a folder here. Uh Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church is having a trunk or treat October thirty-first and six to seven thirty at the church.
Six, seven, go.
But it stopped at nine thirty. Um this past week, I had a meeting, uh Lee and Scott and Kevin had a meeting with the architect for Justin Willis Field. We're roughly about four hundred thousand dollars short of where we need to be, in his opinion, on making this field what we want it to be.
How much?
About four hundred thousand. That is making the bathroom ADA compliant, making the bleachers ADA compliant. With adding restrooms, it's taking the existing restrooms that are there, turning them into one into, like you said, like a storage room for equipment and turn them one into uh storage room. Do what? Turn them one into stor- storage room for uh overflow for concessions. There is a little money left in that bond that would cover it. We have that option. Or we have the option to take the lighting out of it, which was about four hundred thousand, and do a lease purchase on the light. So so probably Wilson was in the meeting as well. Um is that pretty much covered?
Let me let me ask something. Can we do a little brainstorm and see, I know we're gonna have some money left, but can we kind of see how much each part is gonna cost? And the money funding that we have left over, put it all into it? But that's kind of do that. Cause I know uh wasn't uh Ms. Martin is working off some of the parts, making the prices. And see, I'm I'm not sure it's gonna get shot yet.
Good for you. It's some earmark up. Also, so uh you know, what we're trying to do there, and I think everybody's on board, is travel and recruit some people in here to play. But we're gonna have ADA compliant bathrooms, that's what I can add. So.
The architect, huh, he was from the door, he didn't, we did a one point two being out, he didn't add ADA bathroom?
Well, all those, that one point two was based on numbers from four or five years ago.
You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying, I'm just saying that. So he didn't originally, he put the Brandon parking, he didn't originally.
I've got it right down.
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight compliant bathroom. And you know, in in two thousand forty-two, put, put along, we got, I mean, we're working out. I just.
The bathrooms are ADA compliant now.
That's what I'm saying.
They're not big enough to make ADA compliant.
Well, that's not his problem. Okay, okay. All right, all right.
One solution might be when they do the lighting, you at least for, I'm not saying that this is what you're gonna do or whatever. If you do the lighting, there are programs out there that you go to economic reduction in lighting. You can go through a lease purchase that does a kind of a different amount. And if you, for instance, the rodeo arena might be a good candidate for as well. If you have the rough lighting on it, savings of going to a lower amount of of lighting or LED lighting, that could basically just be paid for itself. The county looked at that probably before y'all's term was in there. They ended up not not building with them, but that could be a possibility.
And and let's do this too. Uh Angie, check with Al and Matt and on that wildlife and fishery grant. See where there's the deadline, because you can use that for recreation too. And maybe we could use that for lighting or something like that. So check when that deadline is on that, um the wildlife and fishery. All we would have to pay is uh fifty percent of it.
But if you're doing lighting, you wanted to go do your, I mean, you need to look at the rodeo arena too, because that's that's a big entry. That's a savings or whatever that you.
We could put bulk of it in there.
Wes, um did you look into the uh bathroom situation? You know, they they had the units that they were already built. Did you go go any further with that with that or get a name? Because we could do, we might could do the showers at the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. And that's a good idea. He he had a uh, he had some pictures of some bathrooms he had done at another facility where where you don't have to do so much plumbing or kind of prefab. And maybe that might be an option for the showers.
No, that's it. Based on that last.
It's about seventy-five thousand dollars. He said we'll have to put in three bathrooms at these. That's all for an ADA compliant.
And again, Robbie's contact, I was on Friday, Robbie was out.
Four opposed to him.
Yeah, I went out, took pictures of them in middle west. Said they, the sale of the work, the open area, but I don't know what it's the case.
Too much retrofit. Um just want to say one good piece of good news. We do have that ribbon cutting or groundbreaking event for Jordan carriers. Uh that's a new eleven million dollar office building here in town for a home run business, which is pretty amazing. Um hey, do any updates on Robin's plate?
I just sent my uh, well, I did our Otis one, some contract insurance provider. I'll let, I'll give you an update later on today.
Uh article money, I I agree with what Supervisor Wilson said, and I've said it in the past. I think the most important thing we can do with that money, this is a once in a lifetime deal. And I think the most important thing we can do with that money is spend that money on something that has a lasting impression on our community. And uh eliminating a big chunk of debt will have a lasting impression on our community. And relieving that and 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 when you can, when you get rid of that debt, you increase your cash flow, which makes it easier for our county administrator, makes it easier for all our department heads. So that's all I have. I think we have an argument to be determined. Hang on.
Oh, you guys?
Well, we go have uh trucks, the dump trucks, they get, they'll get them this morning. They'll be at the office. How we get to, you know, Supervisor, that time, come look out, I don't know, I mean, when she's coming to town, I think she is. And another thing on the other dump trucks that we auctioned off, nothing went with the buybacks. We got an email from the guy. We're supposed to be receiving the check sometime pretty quick. It was like it was about two or about dollars more than what the original was. I bet some years.
Too many years in the care too?
Yeah, we got about.
Uh can you get a motion, Brian? So, motion Supervisor Gaines, second Supervisor Wilson, all in favor? All opposed?